Okay. Meeting of the Board of Education is called to, or is called to order here for Thursday, July 21st, 2022. Can we do roll call?
Member Fritner?
Present.
Member Agakanyan?
Here.
Clerk Weisberg?
Present.
Vice President Ferguson?
Present.
President Tabit?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to take your part?
We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Hernan de Nio Tatavaim, and the First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living.
And Teri, I apologize. I did do it out of order, but I can't see with my glasses on, so I have to take them off, and so I apologize. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The superintendent's office has been informed of the sad news of the passing of a longtime community volunteer, successful business owner, and entrepreneur, Lila Ramirez, who brought her experience and skills to the many organizations she served. She was a 20-year dedicated member of the Burbank PTAs, worked on Holocaust education programs, and social justice and education initiatives, volunteered with the Measure S School Bond Committee, and most recently Dolores Huerta Outreach and Fundraising Committee for Burbank Human Relations Council. Lila was the 2022 California State Senate District Woman of the Year. She was a devoted wife, mother of five daughters, grandmother, great-grandmother, and treasured friend to many. Our thoughts and prayers are with her friends and family at this difficult time, and tonight's meeting will be adjourned in her memory. The board met in closed session for discussion items only, no, oh, I forgot the wording, no votes were taken at that time. Adjustments to the agenda. Does anyone have an adjustment to the agenda tonight? Okay. Dr. Hill, you wanted to move your comments up?
Yes, President Tabit, I'd like to have Dr. Paramo introduce our new Assistant Principal at Burbank High School.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, and members of the community. It is my honor and my privilege to announce the new principal at Burbank High School, Assistant Principal Robert Amir Mohamadi. Robert, if you want to come up, that would be great. Robert Mohamadi is a UC Irvine graduate. He majored in English and minored in Journalism. Robert taught five years of English, grades seven through 12. This will be Robert's 11th year as an administrator. He is fluent in four languages: English, Spanish, Farsi, and Shustari. He attended the University of Pacific McGeorge School of Law, has a Master's of Science in Educational Administration, and has successfully served as an administrator in the middle school, high school, and alternative high school settings. Robert is a lifelong Lakers fan, a huge Kansas City Chiefs football fan. He loves fantasy football, loves the Rocky films, and describes himself as the biggest Star Wars nerd in the galaxy. Robert is recently married. He lives with his wife and their pug named Don Pablo, who is the boss of their home. Robert is both extremely excited and grateful to join the Burbank Unified Family and Team, and is looking forward to an amazing school year. It's my honor to introduce Robert.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for that introduction. It's a pleasure to be here. I am beyond excited, I'm beyond thrilled, to join the team and the family here at Burbank Unified. And as I mentioned in my interview, I'm going to do everything I can to reward the faith that's been in place and entrusted in me to serve our families and students here. Thank you very much.
Do my colleagues, oh.
No, go ahead.
Do my colleagues wish to say anything?
I was just going to say, may the force be with you. And welcome, a big welcome.
I think, yeah, welcome from all of us. We're happy to have you here. It's wonderful to meet you, and hopefully we'll get more chance to interact with you soon.
Thank you. As a fellow pug owner, welcome. That's a whole new section of employee groups that we need to create, is maybe just a pug group. Having said that, welcome to the family, also a former Burbank High School, or Burbank High School graduate, so you are being entrusted with an incredible institution. And the new leadership team there, congratulations, and wishing you lots of luck as we start the kind of final countdown to begin. So, take care.
Salam. Quesher Madi.
I like a salam.
Congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Congratulations, also a Burbank High School Bulldog alumni, and I'm a recent Kansas City fan since they acquired Juju. So, yeah. Anyway, that'll be, it'll be a good season.
I do have one other announcement. We do have a new Assistant Principal at John Burrows High School. His name is Mr. Alex Popenko. Unfortunately, he's not able to be here, but instead of reading his bio, I'd like to instead bring him back to the next board meeting and introduce him then. Just wanted you guys to know that we have a new Assistant Principal at Burrows.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Items for future agendas. Yes.
Thank you, President Tabit. I would like to request a future report focused on DEI. I believe I emailed some of this to Dr. Paramo and Dr. Hill, specifically on the process for selecting our teacher leaders, and how we'll be supporting and evaluating their work. Additionally, the same question applies to how we'll be supporting and evaluating the work of our consultant, and additionally, how we'll be overseeing the allocation of funding to our elementary school libraries, specifically noting that we'd like the selection of books to reflect the unique student population on each campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Okay, no presentations or recognitions this evening. We can move on to public comments. People who'd like to address the board. We have two virtual speakers tonight?
They're going to report on the second public.
Gotcha. Okay. So, any individual or group representative present this evening may address the board, I see I have some, of education on any agenda item by completing a white request card and turning to Ms. Ramirez-Adams. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives in person, but we don't have any this evening, so I will not read all of that, and we will start with our first speaker, who's Michelle Go, followed by, sorry, Nicole DeRecky.
Good evening, Burbank Unified School District Board members and fellow attendees. Hello again. My name is Michelle Go, and I am the mother of Gisele Lorimer. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. The reason I'm speaking to you tonight is regarding your policy of not letting unvaccinated students attend overnight field trips. As of today, there are no travel restrictions in Los Angeles County. For this reason, I feel that my daughter and her fellow cheermeet should be allowed to attend USA Cheer Camp from August 1st to the 4th in Indian Wells, California. If that is not enough, I am also willing to provide a PCR test prior to departure, at-home tests to be taken while at camp, drive her to and from the USA Cheer Camp, or get a hotel room, and have her spend the night with me if necessary. I can also provide you with a religious exemption if needed. I hope you will look into your hearts and vote to change your policy against allowing unvaccinated students to attend overnight field trips. When USA Cheer Camp is not mandating participants to be vaccinated, during the COVID lockdown, the only thing that brought my daughter out of her depression and anxiety was cheer tryouts. I would hate to hear, hate to see her relapse because she cannot attend USA Cheer Camp with her fellow cheermates. This is a bonding experience that cannot be missed. I appreciate your time and patience in addressing this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Go. Nicole DeRecky, followed by Darla Gerharder.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, Dr. Hill, members of the district and staff. My name is Nicole DeRecky. I am a Burbank homeowner and a proud teacher of 20 years. I'm speaking for myself tonight. I first spoke to you on May 5th, almost three months ago. I did my best to try to enjoy my summer after the most difficult year in my career. You know, when I think about change, it's often hard to do. I'm a person who hates change. My entire time in BUSD has been about change. I came to BUSD in 2007 as a ninth-grade PE teacher. I was at Burbank High for five years, and due to declining enrollment, I was moved to elementary PE for eight years. Just when I enjoyed my comfort zone, I was moved again to middle school PE due to our two failed parcel tucks. I understand it's hard to make change, especially when it takes courage. Courage is the ability to do something that frightens someone. You have been told for three months from the Board of Education in-person meetings and in emails about what we felt was best for this district, students, and teachers. Why can't you have the courage to do what is right? Our members need to feel trust and respect to move forward. Have you talked about a plan to work on retention, compensation, and staff morale? We need to have confidence in Dr. Hill and having accountability. I want partnerships that make our district better. Have you told Dr. Hill what improvements you would like to see? Have you mentioned to him we want to see someone who comes and sits in a classroom for 30 minutes and sees how our members and our students are? We need more time spent in our schools. We need to see engagement. I will be disappointed if you do not have enough courage to do what is right. The future is important to me. We need a district where veteran teachers are not retiring early. We need a district where teachers and principals don't want to leave here. We need stability. Accountability is the condition of being accountable. It is the responsibility. You were elected to serve the community of Burbank and make good decisions for our members and students. Change is not easy, but if you had more leadership, more courage, you would see that giving a 5% raise and giving a contract extension to Dr. Hill until 2025 was the wrong choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becky. Darla Gerharder, followed by Diana Abasta.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, and members of the community. My name is Darla Gerharder, and here at BUSD, I've worked both as a classified employee and as a certificated employee. I'm currently teaching a 2-3 special education class. On the day of the big decision and whether to extend Dr. Hill's contract and raise, we must consider something more critical to the well-being of our district, staff, and students before this is done. Tonight, I'd like to bring your attention to the living wages and staffing challenges. So, many of our classified employees start at minimum wage and/or just barely above it. Even after years of service, these employees do not make a living wage. These positions are essential and greatly impact the education of our students, which is why we are here. Other positions are essential to supporting our learning environment. Just a few of these positions include instructional assistants for English Language Development, Special Ed, and the Children's Center; community resource assistant; instructional media specialist slash library coordinator; counseling assistant; elementary office assistant; instructional technology media specialist; custodian, and senior custodian. Many classified employees work day in and day out with our students. They are often the ones who make the connections with our struggling students, both academically and socially-emotionally. I remember my son, who has autism, spent many hours with Betty Odell, Miller's former librarian. He was too overwhelmed to choose a book during his classes' time, so she would help him after school. This type of dedication is not unusual. Our classified staff make a difference, and they should be paid appropriately for the job they do and the impact they make, which they are not right now. It is no wonder why it has been difficult to hire and keep these essential positions filled. The following data was calculated for our area through the Living Wage Calculator on A living wage is a Los Angeles County, in Los Angeles County, for two adults both working with one child is $24.24. For a single adult with no children, a living wage is $21.89, and with one child, it is $44.71. Most of our employees are working to make a living and are not working for extra pocket money, not like it was years ago, when I remember we had instructional assistants that wanted to be part of the community, and they were just making a little bit of extra pocket money. That's not the case anymore. With this in mind, we should be looking at how to meet these staffing challenges and how we can provide living wages, rather than extending Dr. Hill's contract and pay raise at this time. We must address the staffing shortages and the compensation we are offering. We should also be addressing the high turnover BUSD has been facing, particularly with our schools' administrative teams and the elimination and cuts such as elementary PE and music. The staffing shortages, added responsibilities, continuous turnover, long delays in the hiring process, low morale, and the elimination cuts to our programs have increased the strain on the rest of our employees. In the long run, it has also cost us financially. More importantly, this is affecting our ability to meet the needs of our students, both academically and socially-emotionally. When I see the financial settlements and compensatory services our district has made in the board meeting agendas, it makes me question if our district offered better wages, thus attracting the best candidates. Could we eliminate some of these financial burdens and retain our highly qualified and dedicated staff? We cannot just work harder to make up for these losses. An organization with a strong reputation and strong leadership generally doesn't have the turnover and staffing shortages we are experiencing. Please address these needs before considering the contract extension and raise for Dr. Hill. He has a contract at this time, and I think he has a pretty generous salary and benefits package, so I think we need to look at some of the more pressing issues. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Darla. Diana Abasta, but I don't, okay.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, members of the district and staff. My name is Nicole DeRecky. I am the BTA Vice President. Tonight, I address you with the BTA President Diana Abasta's comments. Dear President Tabit and members of the board.
Yeah, you need to, yeah, I think it's not okay to put her name. You could have said Nicole again. I don't know. You, I, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I shouldn't, sorry, wait a minute. I shouldn't respond to, to comments. Can I, hold on, Nicole, just a minute. Your thoughts?
So, traditionally, we have one speaker, one card. If somebody else wants to fill out a card, they can do so and read that, but they would have to read it. Unfortunately, you've already spoken, so traditionally, at least, it's been board rules that one speaker, one card, one time, per period. So, thank you. But, so if somebody else wants to fill out a card on behalf and read the Abasta's statement, that's okay. But I kind of support that.
You're good? Anyone else?
That was a good apology.
Yes, you did, thank you. Okay, so we're in agreement. Thank you. Are you going to have, oh, never mind. So, our next speaker then is Carmenita Heliger, followed by Nadra Ostrom.
Good evening, President Talbot, Vice President Ferguson, Board members Weisberg, Fritner, and Agakanyan. Tonight, I have a few very important things to cover and some ideas I would like the board to consider. First and foremost, I would like to talk about driving safety around school zones. Tuesday's meeting really brought up the fact that we have to speak to parents about driving safely around our schools, and I took a look at my own self and thought about the times I was really rushing to get my children to school on time. And I'm asking the board to consider alleviating the punishment for tardies, because a lot of times, parents don't want to enter the cycle of a certain amount of tardies become an unexcused absence, and then all of a sudden, they're truant. Because the myth is that children who are always tardy don't live in BUSD, and that's why their parents bring them late. The second thing I want to talk about is COVID. Our numbers are increasing in LA County, and we're starting in a few weeks, and I know that a mask mandate might be starting on the 29th because of our numbers. And I'm wondering if the board has any plans on outreach. I know that our admin team does, but does the board. I know parents don't want to spend another Sunday night before school starts panicked on whether or not their schools are going to open, or whether their children are going to be safe. And we definitely do not want high numbers that we experience after winter break with the outbreak in our schools, and we have really high numbers compared to the four months in fall that we didn't experience those high numbers. The third most very important item I want to discuss is overdoses in our teens. Children are suffering from trauma and depression, and they're choosing to self-medicate with street drugs. Right now, we're losing children because of fentanyl overdoses. They don't even know it's in there. Even students ordering Adderall just to make it through finals are dying because it's laced with fentanyl. I'm asking the board to come up with a plan to do a PSA, or information for our students and our parents, to teach them to order fentanyl strips. That way, they can at least test the drugs that they have until we can come together as a community and treat the trauma and pressures that our students are under, and we can start saving lives. And finally, I would like to discuss Dr. Hill. I know in my household, this is how the story goes. My husband comes to me and says, "Are you bothering Dr. Hill yet again today?" And I say, "Absolutely." And he asks me not to, and I go ahead and send another thousand-word email over to Dr. Hill any time I feel like it. I know that me and Dr. Hill did not agree on everything, hence the thousand-word emails that he always receives from me. But what I do know is that Dr. Hill has, Dr. Hill puts the students and teachers and admins first. He has a vision for this entire community, and I think he needs to have more support from the board. Can you imagine working daily, knowing that a few of your bosses don't like you and don't appreciate your work? What type of mindset are you allowing Dr. Hill to have to work under, the pressure of knowing that his bosses don't like him? How would you feel if your bosses, let's say, the majority of the community, didn't like you and didn't want you to keep your job? Yet some of our board members are very verbal and calculating and letting him know that he is not wanted here, and then sends him off to run an entire district daily with those callousness and pressure. If you wake up daily and find yourself only discussing people, you need to change your mindset and your conversation. And I will leave you with this one thought from Eleanor Roosevelt. Great minds discuss ideas. Average minds discuss events. And small minds discuss people.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Nadra Ostrom, followed by Paulie Stenberg.
Good evening, Dr. Hill, board members, and our BUSD admin. My name is Nadra Ostrom, and I am a parent of two in the district, and I'm here tonight to talk about Dr. Hill's contract. I believe that the contract should be renewed, or extended, or whatever the vote is. These are really challenging times, you know, for everyone, and I feel for all of our communities, our, you know, our families, our teachers, everything that everybody's going through. It's hard for, you know, one person to make everybody happy, but I think about what's in someone's heart was their character. And I know when I first wrote to Dr. Hill, and I had a concern about things that were going on in the school where my children attend, immediately, he was like, "Let's come in, let's talk about it." He's always had an open-door policy, and I feel it's really important. And the other thing that I think is really important is that, you know, Dr. Hill has taken a lot of heat, I know, for the work that we've done around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm one of the people who've been pretty vocal about it. It's not easy. It's not easy work, and we're at a point, I think, where it's almost like a tipping point, where some nitty-gritty stuff is going to happen. I can definitely look back and see progress from where we first started this work two years ago, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And I know this is not the only thing that's going on in the district. There's COVID, and there's real needs of what our teachers are, you know, they have needs, which obviously should be met. We have always been in support of higher salaries for all of our, all of our staff, our classified staff and our teaching staff. And I also know that that's not only because of one person. We've had systemic issues in this district, and I think a lot of you understand that. But I want to, you know, point it out, that we live in a community that hasn't completely supported also, you know, raising taxes, and there's a lot of other systemic things that have, why we're sort of in the financial area that we are in right now. Leadership is always important. It's always important, but one thing that I do know about a good leader is that a good leader is somebody who listens and who is open when they don't know everything, and nobody does. And I think that it's really important to have someone that is willing to do his or her best, to be open and surround themselves with people who might have ideas, even if those people don't agree all the time. I think a change right now in the leadership of our district would I think a change right now in the leadership of our district would be a drastic mistake. There's so much going on right now. I understand there's a lot of turnover, and I don't think this is the right time to turn over the head of our district. So thank you for listening to me tonight, and everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ostrom. Next speaker is Polly Stenberg, followed by Amy Fuer. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Great.
Good evening, everyone, Board Members, President Tabit, Superintendent Dr. Hill. Everybody, everybody's faces, I come up here, I feel like I want to call out everybody I ever met that works in Burbank Unified, because it really is a collective, and I feel that so much, even over the summer months, when I've had the opportunity to take meetings with various Board Members, teachers, and Superintendent Dr. Hill. And so I very much want to speak in favor of the renewal of his contract. I share the sentiments of some of the earlier speakers, that continuity of leadership is critical right now, especially for the folks who have a demonstrated commitment to the most important issues. And one of the very first meetings that I took with Dr. Hill, once I became a parent advocate, as I became involved in nonprofit work, as I sat on the School Site Council of my kids' elementary school, was around DEI and DEI strategy. And from the first meeting that we took, I think it was a few years ago now, we disagreed vigorously. And I proposed an idea that he set out that will never happen. And like my nine-year-old daughter, I felt like that was a good starting point of the conversation. No means, okay, let's keep talking. Because one theme that I've seen throughout public education is that there are a lot of ideas that, the first knee-jerk reaction, especially for people who worked in public education for a long time, is that will never happen. So I think that with the passion of the community who cares, that has greater vision for things that have never happened before, that together, when we start incrementally shifting some of the entrenched bureaucracy and ideas, we actually get innovation and creativity. And even though Dr. Hill has that experience, he knows what things have been hard to achieve historically, he has never stopped listening and never stopped participating in a shared vision of what's possible, specifically related to anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and an inclusive community for all of our students. At the end of the day, it's so simple, I feel, what we're trying to achieve here. Kids want very basic things. They want to feel seen, loved, and safe. Everything after that is details, and we can be great in all areas of academic achievement, of sports, of music, of all those things, if we have those basic things. But when kids don't feel safe, when they're not feeling seen, when they're being discouraged for whatever reason in their academic direction, then we are missing. And so I really do feel that that is the core of what Dr. Hill is doing in, in every area. And I also feel this is a time of yes and, where no vision is at the expense of another. We don't want to give kids ukuleles and take away their Spanish classes. We want all of it. We want our CSEA employees to make a more equitable wage. We want our BTA employees to make a more equitable wage for the cost of living, which is so high. It's astronomically high. And so working together towards that end, solving some of the systemic issues, becoming more collaborative as we work in Sacramento to solve these issues, I'm very excited to see what's going to happen with the results of AB 181 and the 12% to 14% that's going to be added to the local control funding formula for the grant money that's specifically dedicated to anti-bias and anti-racism. There are tools out there, there are resources out there. We just have to collaborate on how to get them into our district, and I believe that continuing with Dr. Hill is the way to do so. I also just want to say, I don't think she's here, but happy birthday to Kimberly Clark. The efforts that you put into making this all happen every Thursday that this takes place is greatly appreciated, because the clerical, the organizational is absolutely just as important. So that is my time. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Stenberg. Our final speaker, at least for, that I have a card for, is Amy Fuer.
Good evening, President Tabit, Members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, and Members of the District. My name is Amy Fuer.
Amy, can I stop you for just one second?
Yes.
I just want to be clear that it is Amy Fuer on behalf of Diana Abasta.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't say that nicely. I apologize.
And I'm the BTA Middle School Director. Tonight, I address you with the BTA President Diana Abasta's comments. Dear President Tabit and Members of the Board, the concern from our BTA members over the possible, possible renewal of Superintendent Matt Hill's contract continues to grow. I continue to receive emails regarding the possibility of a renewal of the superintendent's contract, which does not expire until 2023. I know this is a personnel issue. However, your role as Board Members is to ensure that our school district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of our community. A Board of Education fulfills this role by performing five major responsibilities: setting direction, establishing an effective and efficient structure, providing support, ensuring accountability, providing community leadership as advocates for children, the school district, and public schools. These five responsibilities represent core functions that are so fundamental in how you, as a governance team with the superintendent, make decisions that best serve the students in BUSD. When you evaluate a superintendent who has been here for seven years, what do you look at to justify the extension of a contract? I know you will want to insert COVID into the mix as to the hardships of the past few years, and no doubt, it impacted all of us. However, the leaders, the leader and stewards of a district have to be clear in their vision, capable in their direction, and confident in the goals needed to transform us and move us forward in a way that truly develops our young people and restores the trust and respect of its employees and community. We are held accountable daily. Where is the plan of accountability for the superintendent? Establishing an effective and efficient structure requires oversight. This is not something that is handed off to a superintendent and staff without adequate follow-through on your part as good stewards. As you are aware, we have lost a large number of staff across all grade levels. What is the plan to work on retention, compensation, and staff morale? Has this been part of a plan to ensure accountability? Has a superintendent been given a directive to work on, a plan, and is it reflected in your budget? Providing community support requires building and increasing capacity in order to develop and nurture strong partnerships with all our parents. Is the significance of a BUSD public education apparent to all? This has to be a partnership based on trust and the support of the superintendent, and not just on a few parent committees. Currently, there is not the willingness or trust needed to go forward, to work together to find solutions. What is the plan or direction to address the safety and discipline issues in our schools? The superintendent has a year to show tangible improvements and effective plans that plainly outline what will be done to address problem areas. Show your values through your committed action. At this time, do not extend the contract. With the 5% raise, there has been reward already. I thank you for your time. Serving in leadership positions is not easy, nor should it be, because it requires a clear sense of purpose, a determined commitment to be selfless, and a genuine desire to make changes when needed. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And the final card is Nuriya Lundberg.
Good evening, Board of Education, staff. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak, and I always feel nervous talking up here, even if I know all of you. But I find myself in the need to speak in regards about Dr. Hill's contract. I want to support some of the comments in favor of, because one of the things that I think right now we all need, because, yes, people come and go, there's, I mean, who am I to say if it's okay, if it's good whether to raise his salary or not? What I am focusing on is the virtues that he carries and that he delivers upon us all these years. And, and I think it's not easy to find a leader as Dr. Hill very easily. And right now, what we need is stability, just like some of the other parents just said. So part of that is important, and I think because of the attributes and personality that Dr. Hill has, are very important to keep that. So I really wish that you consider the, more the aspects of the human part. I have, everybody has mistakes, and everybody has virtues and weaknesses, but I've, I've never seen Dr. Hill lose his composure, his poise. And, and I've sensed, because I'm very observant in body language, and, and I know sometimes he must, he must feel, and, and I've seen he hasn't liked sometimes the comments, but the way he carries himself, I think it's a great example for, in my case, for my son that is part of the district. He needs to see examples of good manners, of good ways to handle situations. And, and I think a leader like Dr. Hill is very important that we have that. And good attitudes are very hard to find. Right now, it's very easy to point fingers and say, you didn't do your job. It's very easy, you know? And if we wake up with a criticism on our laps, it's much easier to point fingers and say, and point out who hasn't done their jobs. And I don't think that's going to be in any good, in create, in create a good community, if that's what we're, we're looking for. If we want Dr. Hill to deliver, we have to support him. It's, it's like a child. You want him to, to be good, don't criticize, because the criticism is going to stay in the mind. So if we constantly criticize, and, and I, I don't mean no disrespect to the teachers, because I respect them very much, but ever since Dr. Hill came in, I have only heard how he was not going to be good for the district, et cetera, and I don't want to go into those details, because I don't want my time to finish, but I really want to say these things, because part of his attitude, we need to support him, we shouldn't criticize him, we should point out areas of opportunities to, to make things better. And, and I really appreciate, and it really comforts me personally, how I've seen his open-door policy has worked for all of us. And I definitely confirm and agree that he's always willing to listen, and, and I see through my job and also personally, how he, whatever he says he is going to do, he does it. If sometimes he hasn't been able to deliver because of the, of what happened with the Q, I don't remember, I just lost the, the measure. It isn't his fault. It was about, it just didn't happen, but he shouldn't fall on his lap. We cannot put, we cannot expect to build community and, and think that it's, it only falls on one person's lap. And, and I don't think criticism is going to get, get us anywhere. So I, I do, I do think we should give him a chance and, and support him. He needs support. He has to deal with parents, with teachers, with delivering to you guys. He has to deliver. I mean, I, if I put myself in those shoes, I would already have run. I mean, I wouldn't be, have been able to, to handle it probably. And, and I also think it's very important that, to notice that, that he has a virtue or a quality that isn't, that, that a human being doesn't come across all at once. He has intelligence, he has vision. He is, he's very sensitive, and he cares about people. And, and when he says something, I, I do see consistency in his words and his actions. So I come here to speak on your behalf, independently that I work for the district. I'm speaking as a parent and as what I observe, and I wish that you take this into account and to consider renewing his contract, so.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Bye.
Okay, no more white cards? All right. We will move forward then. Staff responses.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to all the speakers. Both, well, Ms. Go, thank you for your comments. The Board's going to have the discussion about the overnight policy. And the rest of the speakers was about my contract, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment. I just want to share that whether we agree or disagree on topics, or there's frustrations or concerns, my door is always open. So anyone that has concerns, I welcome a conversation that we continue that, and we can follow up offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member responses. Mr. Fritner, Dr. Agger Conian.
Thank you. All of the comments were about the gendized items, so we'll have those discussed shortly, so I don't want to get into details on those. I do appreciate everyone coming out. I do appreciate the passion that all of you have spoken with. We do hear it, as you can see, there are obviously opposing viewpoints, and almost every issue there will be. And however this turns out, may not be the way you may see it, but don't, don't mistake that for us not listening and not taking into consideration all viewpoints, because we do appreciate hearing from everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Agger Conian, please go.
Thank you. I do want to also thank all of our speakers. And I know we're going to have a discussion later, later on about some of the topics, but I do want to follow up in Ms. Heliger's comments about the, the fentanyl issue. On Tuesday, Burbank Police Department seized 100,000 pills that were laced with fentanyl. And last year alone, on my block, three young people have died from fentanyl. And I think this is an epidemic, and I think, and we're not safe in Burbank. So I do want us to have a serious discussion about this. This is not your parents' drugs, you know? It's, it's deadly. And you've been reading about it. I mean, there was a TikTok kid who recently died in a parking lot. So I do want us to see and look into, you know, what is happening, but also try to, you know, talk about this serious epidemic that's affecting all of our children across the United States. Thank you.
Mr., Dr. Weisberg, sorry.
It's cool. I've been called worse. Thank you to everybody for coming out, like my colleagues will address most of the topics later on. To Mrs. Heliger, I've been in really productive conversations with the chief police about the overdose issue in Burbank, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue that and like bring some tangible things forward. So I'm glad you brought it up. It's definitely on our mind. And the chief brought it up to me. It wasn't something that I had really, I mean, I was aware, but not as concretely as after the meeting. So I'm going to continue the conversation with him, talk with district staff about some tangible things we can do, but it's, it is definitely on the radar, and it is really important, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you so much. First responding to Ms. Heliger, I, yes, I, I think when it comes to strips, anything that we can do in the meantime, until we can figure out a strategy in coordination with PD, you name it, absolutely. And thank you for, for escalating that. I, I think that that's actually really important. Tardies, that's an interesting approach. It's, I don't want to encourage lateness, you know, 30, 40 minutes late to class kind of thing, totally get that. And it's a balance, as all things are, but I do think that's very interesting. And I do remember quite a few moments of me causing stress for my own mom as, you know, I'm going to be tardy, I'm going to be tardy, and, and where the head goes at that moment as you're operating motor vehicle, that's a lot. And, and it's something certainly, I guess I'd be interested in hearing in how other districts approach that, potentially, when possible. The rest is, the rest of the comments are on the contract, and I want to thank everybody for coming down and, and contributing your thoughts to this. This is our most sacred responsibility as a Board, to select a leader and, and to make that decision with all the facts that we have, based off of performance, you name it. It is also really hard, just to be honest, because on the advice of legal counsel, there's very little we can say to justify our decision either way. But I, I want you to know, I have, I really care about this role and doing it right. I'm not perfect. I make mistakes all the time. But if I vote a certain way, it's because I know this community, believe in this community, have heard from this community, and I'm, and I'm doing my best on behalf of it. That's no different from anybody else up here, but we may come to different outcomes as a result of it. And I hope this community that I pledge to serve knows that whatever decision I make, I, I very much do it with my whole heart, and I do my due diligence.
Thank you to the speakers who came down tonight. Thank you to the speakers who came down tonight. As my colleagues have said, it's never easy to make difficult decisions. We take them very seriously and spend a lot of time thinking them and researching and going over. So I appreciate everyone's comments. Mrs. Heliger, I've been working for a while. This is the first time I've heard you bring this up, so I'm excited to hear that someone else in the community is concerned about safe driving on our streets and especially around our schools. I've done a lot of work in the last two terms that I've been on the board to help reduce speeds around our school, promote safe driving, and make sure that everybody, staff included, gets to school safely and timely. We had a saying at our house, early is on time, on time is late. And so my kids repeat that to me all the time, because it's usually me who's late. But we made sure that we left in a timely manner to be there ahead of time, because we got to follow the rule, early is on time, on time is late. So I would hope that folks that were consistently tardy would go, hmm, maybe I need to leave a little bit earlier so we don't rush, so that we're safe. But I can't raise everybody, but only would hope that that's the thought process. But I'd be happy to talk about ways that we could promote safe driving around our schools. There is a wonderful committee out there called Together We Can, that I'm sure would appreciate more help, more community members volunteering to help out and speak up. And it's a good group, and so I suggest you reach out to them as well. And Dr. Paramo and I, with this police put together, well, the police put together an amazing program that all of our ninth graders in health classes received last year, as you heard at the meeting the other night. And that's going to be continued and hopefully expanded. So we're doing what we can as a school district, and always want to do more towards the safety of our students as they come to school. So I think that's a great topic to bring forward, and we can continue that conversation and, you know, just keep throwing out those ideas. Eventually, maybe someday, we'll get to that spot where I won't see a Facebook post about, you know, the people double parking in front of schools, or speeding, or, you know, all the other things that happen in the morning rush. And I'm sure our police department would be appreciative of those comments as well. So thank you all for coming down and speaking out. Okay, moving on. 10A, Report on the Recommendations to the Board of Education from the District English Learner Advisory Committee. Dr. Knappick.
Good evening, Board President Tabbett, Vice President Ferguson, Board Member Superintendent Hill, Senior Leadership, and the Burbank School Community. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk about recommendations from the District English Learner Advisory Committee. Ms. Goldenberg is here with me to co-present. And just to, before we get into the recommendations, I just want to give a little bit of background about the District English Learner Advisory Committee. That is a committee of parents representing the English language learners across the district. So we have representatives from every school site that participate in the D-LAC, we call it. And they are charged with having a responsibility to give us advice on the district master plan for English language learners. They give us input on how we are developing our goals and objectives for the program. The D-LAC gives us feedback on the needs assessment that we perform each year annually. They help us to monitor teacher requirements, such as certification. They help us with reclassification rates and procedures, and then any kind of notifications to parents, too, we have conversations about, too. So they have a lot of responsibilities. We meet with the D-LAC regularly, Mrs. Goldenberg and I, as well as our ELD specialists and our ELD coordinators across the district, too. Do I have the slides?
We're not seeing the slides, are we?
There we go. So like I said, we're going to be focusing tonight on the census, the language census. We'll be talking about the survey that we have done. We'll talk about the program in general, and then a little bit about the D-LAC, which I've already talked about already. On the next slide, this slide represents languages spoken in Burbank Unified School District. We have 14,331 students represented in this chart. The English group, which is 66% speaking English, as reported through the home language survey, represents 9,434 families. And then we have our other languages spoken across the district, Armenian, which represents 15%, Spanish, 12%, Arabic, Russian, and Other. And that represents about 4,897 families, once again, reported through the language survey.
Dr. Knappick, quick question.
Yes.
Just for clarification. So when you say English, that means the students only speak English?
Correct.
That's one language.
Yes. As reported on the home language survey. Primary language.
Primary.
Yes. On the next slide, the actual English learners in BUSD rates about 10% each year annually for the past one, two, three, four, five years. And this most current year was 1,444 students, representing 10.1%. We also take, and we have a snapshot here, of our immigrants, our immigrant populations who are new to the district, coming to us from another country. And you can see here the rates, most recently in 2021, this past school, you were at 446. And I believe that after we reported the census on the first Wednesday of October, we advanced, we gained about 130, was it, more students?
180.
180 more students that are not reported on this, because they occurred afterwards. Okay? I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Goldenberg.
Hello. Nice to see everyone. President Tabbett and board members and Dr. Hill. Seems weird to be saying that when I, like, hey, family. Okay. So, oh, gosh, now I'm on TV. Back to, oh, Title III Program Overview, thank you. So we have, we get a little over $100 per English learner and per immigrant student. And of course, it's based on the census date. And what we use the money for is for intervention, for theater arts integration, supplemental teaching materials, parent ed, and professional development. So we hold some of the funds centrally and pay for things like the theater arts integration program. But then the schools, the sites also have allocations, and they can decide what to do with the money for those people who don't know how schools are funded, or like, maybe not understand it as well as the nerds like me. It's like, there's our base grant, then our LCAP supplemental, and then like, all the entitlements, the federal money. Out of all of them, Title III immigrant, actually, is the hardest to spend, because you have to provide anyone who's an eligible immigrant with everything else that's available to all the kids, and then you can use that extra money. That's why the intervention is often after school. Let's see, supplemental teaching materials, it adds on to what we already have as our base, or, what the heck, our core adoption. So, okay. And then professional development, where we haven't been able to do a lot of PD, COVID, and we're hoping to get back to, what is it called, Project GLAD. We have two of our teachers who are becoming certified presenters. And they did, they both worked summer school with me. I was one of the summer school TOSSAs. And they did a great job with Project GLAD. They're very excited to roll it out, so I cannot wait to bring it back. Oh, Project GLAD, thank you. It's guided language acquisition design. And, yeah, I know, all these acronyms, right? Every profession has them. So with guided language acquisition design, it's about giving English learners, but actually, it's really good for all kids, access to the core curriculum. So it's not the designated ELD, it's what's called Integrated English Language Development, which happens throughout the day in all subjects. Of course, with Project GLAD, we usually focus on English language arts, social science, social studies, science, but, and math, but there's other subjects, too, that can benefit from a lot of use of graphic organizers and visuals, lots of kid talk and kid processing. So, okay, so that's Project GLAD. Next, we have, oh, okay, so, I have to brag a little.
My pride and joy.
We did such, we did a really great job. And we did a good job, because we had great people at the sites. So federal program monitoring, affectionately known as FPM, okay, maybe not affectionately, requires us to upload documents for compliance. So it's not just like our board policies and administrative regulations and our EL master plan, but we have to show evidence of all of it. And we had no findings with anything, with any of the things. I mean, it wasn't just ELS that were, Title III, there was Title I, there was other things, too. No findings, it means we were in compliance. One of the things that you see, and I don't know if you see this when it comes, or know exactly what it means when it comes across your desk, I mean, you probably do, but let me just say it. Teachers have to have a credential, of course. They also have to have an English learner authorization. And sometimes we have teachers coming from out of state who don't have that authorization yet, so they have to apply for an emergency CLAD, Cross Cultural Language and Development Certification. So when we talk about the ELD program, it really is every single teacher is credentialed or has the emergency credential, because they're working towards that certification, to teach English learners, like everyone. PE, art, music, doesn't matter. They have to have had the training or taken the tests. So that's why it's important that the school board knows, like, hey, we have these five or these six. I mean, really, out of all of our teachers, that's nothing. We have very strong teachers in our district. So, and so you'll see that come across your desk, usually in the fall, about people who are, have their emergency CLAD. And I believe they're allowed to renew it for three years. So, let's see, okay. Onto, oh, and the thing, the reason why I brought up credentialing is that's because a lot of districts aren't in compliance for that. We happen to be very lucky with our teaching staff, which includes administrators, too. Okay. So the, we had the English, every year, we do an ELD program survey. We send it out, we try and do it one per family. It's, that's easy when you have, like, six grade levels, seven grade levels. Like, elementary, it's easy to figure out if they're a family, but sometimes families might get a survey from their elementary kid, and their middle school, and their high school. I didn't do anything, I promise. So the, we had, only 22% of the families responded. We, last year, had fewer, and the year before, we had, like, 33. We were so excited, we're like, yay, 33! And it was because we sent home the survey's paper pencil. And I would think after a year of distance learning, we would have had more responses online, but we didn't. People still are hesitant to use it, or maybe don't know how to use it, or, you know, whatever. So this, next year, we will do both. We will send out both the paper and the electronic. Parents and community members from home, only vote once, just kidding. Only fill out one survey, please. So this was the breakdown in general, oops, I need my glasses. So in general, of our English learners, the majority are at elementary, that's 61% of them, that's the green line. And out of all the respondents to the survey, 67% were elementary. So, not too bad, they're in the 60s. But middle school, they were not representing very much. They're 20% of our population, but only 10% of the respondents. High school, 19%, but 23% responded. So it's middle school, you know? We'll work with them, try and give them some sort of incentive or whatever, to actually hand it to their parents and hopefully get it back from their parents. So, going on. We always ask certain questions, like, how long have you been a parent in Burbank? And it's nice to see that there's a smattering of representation, especially like, the less than one year, that's 35%. That's great, that people were, you know, jumping in and trying to answer the questions. And it's funny that 65% had never been to an ELAC meeting at their site. So with, when Dr. Knappick mentioned that we have to go over notifications to parents, and we do that at D-LAC, the parents tell us, well, this stuff is too wordy, or this, you need to explain this acronym, or whatever. And so that, to me, the fact that parents may not have gone to ELAC, but they've read what we've been sending home, bodes well. Okay. So then, the next question is, like, do you understand or do you know about these certain questions? And the respondents could say, yes, I don't need any more information. Yes, I understand, but I would like more information. Or, no, I have no idea. Give me information. So, and when they do that, since the surveys are anonymous, we hope that they actually give us their email addresses or their names, so we can look them up and contact them. And the site staff are great, because the ELD specialists and coordinators, they will call parents, they will meet with them, they will email them whatever the parents need to try and answer their questions. So the survey serves two purposes. It informs us as a district, but it also informs the site staff. So the survey responses were pretty much the same as they were two years ago, back right before the schools shut down. The biggest difference is in parents knowing whom to contact at the school. And we have to remember that, at least, like, remember, 60-something percent are at elementary? We didn't let parents go onto campuses at elementary to volunteer like they did in the past. We had, I don't know about all schools, but I work at Edison in addition to being at the district office, and our school site council meetings were online, our ELAC meetings were online. And there might be an online fatigue, you know, after all the meetings we've had. So they don't really, they may not know who the ELD specialist is or who the ELD coordinator is. One thing I do want to say is that in the spring of 2020, when schools were closed, we had one of our ELD specialists retire. And it wasn't because of COVID, I mean, she'd long been planning this. And we weren't able to replace her, because the money that is, that is part of the LCAP supplemental, there wasn't, there was a deficit. And so we were, we had to divide up, that's why I said I'm at Edison, because prior to that, I hadn't been assigned to a school. I was just overseeing the district and helping things out. It's really changed a lot. Like, we've never, before this year, never had any students who were English learners at the ILA, Independent Learning Academy. We had 44, I think, this spring, which meant that on top of everything I'm doing, and on top of my Edison and blah, 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 I had to test them, too. And I got a lot of help from people at the district and also from my site staff. I mean, they all pitched in without, because we didn't replace the one person who left, one of our ELD specialists now has four sites instead of three. Another, instead of having two sites, she has three, and the other one had three, and we just kind of redistributed. So we're getting to know, honestly, we're getting to know those communities, because we just, we made the switch after Angie retired, and we were online, so we couldn't really get to know them. And then last year, we were back, but they weren't on campus. So I'm hoping that this number of whom to contact at the school will improve. In fact, I know we will make it our charge to make sure they know. Okay. So then, the last thing, and this is really important for sites in particular, is the topics for parent education, they're required to allocate part of their Title III money specifically to topics of interest to parents of English learners. So overall, just like every single year, it's funny, reading and math skills. How do I help my kid with reading? How do I help my kid with math? Those, that's always the top one. And then homework and study skills is usually the second or the third. This one, though, the second one this year, stages of how students learn English, I was like, wow, they want to know. You know, we have a really, one of our ELD specialists at elementary put together a great PowerPoint that we've shared amongst all the levels that we can use for PowerPoint that we've shared amongst all the levels that we can use for, to inform parents about how language acquisition works. So, and then, where I broke it down into elementary, middle, and high school, these are the, these topics are things that the site staff will bring forward and present during ELAC, or have a special night for it, or whatever. It's funny that in middle school, they wanted to know more about the electives, like, okay, great. But reading and math skills was there for each of the three levels. And then, of course, things like financial aid for college and college information, that was a lot of, requested more at the high school level, which is to be expected. And then, parents in general just wanted to know more about reading and math skills once again. And then, there was a tie, and this is the first time I've seen this, because I could talk all day about ed code and stuff like that. If you need to go to sleep, just call me, no, just kidding. And parents, that was one of the things, in general, for themselves, they wanted to know about California standards and understanding California and federal requirements for English learners. And then, understanding grading and report cards too. So, those will be some of the topics we will be presenting across the, at the district. Wait, let me back up. Those are topics that we will do for parent education at the sites, but also some of the things that we will be doing, topics going over in our DLEC meetings too. Whoops, no, I had another slide, and they switched it back to me. That's okay. So, this, this next slide was about DLEC, and actually, Dr. Knopfik already talked about it, so sorry, I should have put that first. But this next, these next two slides are really, really important. We had like a great discussion with parents in August, when we were coming back to school. Of course, it was online, but we had more participants. And we're like, okay, so why do you participate? And they were very honest about it. And then, what were some of the barriers to participation? And a lot of it was time, you know, we're overscheduled, overtasked, overcommitted. And then, language. And then, another thing that was great, and we had staff members even weigh in on it, is the background experience, that like, other countries don't necessarily expect parents to be as involved in school as we do. So, it's, it's like a culture shock, you know? So, suggestions to break down the barriers, we have, having multiple options or opportunities to attend things, providing more guidance and information to the families, like, letting them know, like, this is what the school system's like, how would you like to participate, how can we help you participate? Let's see. Oh, and then, this was really, this one sparked a lot of conversation of asking parents questions in ways that elicit feedback, so it's not just a question for a yes and no answer. It's like, but first, of course, you have to develop the relationship with the parents before they're going to be comfortable opening up, so it's a process. Let's see, anything else that's of interest? Oh, and then, the other thing was to include information about connecting with other groups, like, the, the DEI, there's like a district level group, but I think also school level groups. And it's interesting that the parent groups, like, I saw, well, the parents who came up here before, and I was like, yeah, those are all, we should connect. We should connect, for sure. I don't know if that would mean another meeting, but maybe we can combine meetings. So, that is all that we have? Then it's longer? Oh, my gosh. Okay. Any questions or comments? Oh, my gosh, look at this. Okay.
Thank you. So, first of all, thanks to both of you for the fastest turnaround of my initial 12,000 questions I sent you this afternoon. That was world record. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the amazing amount of work, especially because you have an out-of-office message and you're still here.
Oh, I put that on right at 2:00, because that's when I, my time was over at, at summer school, being the TOSA at Providence.
Well, I'm impressed, either way. A couple of questions. So, I know all the kiddos have Chromebooks, but do we think that there's any sort of barriers in regards to like attending hybrid meetings because of tech? Like, or access to tech, or like?
Could be.
Consistent Wi-Fi? So, that might be something to just check out, to see. I don't, I like, I don't have an answer, but it did occur to me. A question for Dr. Hill, I think, which is, so the, the loss of the, of the ELD specialist because of, we know it because of funding, is that going to be something that in the foreseeable future, we might be able to address, or we just don't know? And that's my sense of it, Ms. Koenberg.
We're at a deficit, right?
Yeah.
All right, so that was a position that was vacant, was reviewed by the board, and was recommended to be frozen while it was vacant. Now, with the state budget, there is one-time funding that we're getting more details on about expanded learning, English learners are a category in there. As we get more details, that's something we can talk to the board. It is one-time funding that may be spread over four years, though. So, those are some conversations that we can have as we prioritize that new funding.
Great, thank you. And then, the, the last thing, I, it was interesting to see the mention about college info. It's something, I've been talking with Dr. Paramo and Dr. Hill a little bit about, is how the district can provide support from anything from proofreading essays to providing that information, so it's really interesting to see it here. And I also really appreciate it, I'm not going to go into it because I want to let other people speak, but the suggestions that you, you and Dr. Knopfik listed about ways to get more parent engagement, so just thanks to all of you for your proactive thinking about this. And it'll be interesting to explore the, the hypothetical tech gap and see if that is contributing in any way.
May I say something that you said about, addressed something, you said about the college and universities?
Yeah, please.
When Dr. Hill was hired, or right before he was hired, Mrs. Cusio and I had to sit down with the, I can't remember her title, but the person from Laco who oversees English learners. And she was like, just, she showed us that there were 0% of our ELs who met the UCCSU requirements. Part of the issue is that when kids come in, and if they come in at like, an ELD, in ninth grade, say, an ELD III level, right, and then they do ELD IV, then they get into the transitional English, they're only earning one year of English credit.
Right.
You can take ELD III or IV as credit for UCCSU, but you can't do both. And so, then, that would require them to have initial credit courses in the summer. And at the, before Dr. Hill, it's like, it was all no, 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 because that's for credit recovery. And I went and was a squeaky wheel, and talked with Sharon, talked with John, talked with whoever listened to me, and they talked to Dr. Hill, and then, we were able to do, we able, we were, nah, decided to use some of the LCAP supplemental in order to do that. And now, we have ELs who are able to go to UCs and CSU's right out of 12th grade.
That's fantastic.
So.
That's great.
Just wanted to mention that.
It's great, it's great.
I know, it was huge, it was really huge.
It's challenging too, because with COVID and all the different changes now to, to applying to college, where the essay now has so much more weight because of the removal of standardized testing, you know, that's just another added layer, so it's really helpful to learn about, and we can talk more about this, I hope, the specific needs that we can hopefully address too, but that's awesome.
Great.
Yes, thank you. So, as a former ELD 12 grader, because I came here 12th grade, and I was an ELD student, and also, you keep saying ELAC, I work at ELAC, so it's always like, ELAC, ELAC, ELAC. East LA Community College.
Oh, okay.
No, no, ELAC and DLEC, but I work for East Los Angeles College, so we call it ELAC. Anyways, I actually, two months ago, I actually went twice to MIR with the ELD class. I went, and I went back again. And for someone who came here at 12th grade, who was an ELD, who mother was a former teacher, but didn't speak the language, some of the findings they were having, I'm not surprised, but I'm also happy about what is happening. And I'll tell you what, how this kind of works within the network. You know, immigrants come in like certain numbers at certain years. I'm the person who came from Germany, because Germany opened their doors at that point. Before me, it was Belgium. You know, my wife came to Italy, you know, when Armenia opened, Italy was given, do you understand? So, you come in groups, you all know each other, you come here, when I came here, all my friends from first grade were here, because over there, you go K to 12, it's same system. And I do agree with you, and I've said this a couple of times, it's very different. You respect teachers, parents don't get involved because kids go to school, teachers teach, you go to school, God forbid, teacher calls you though. If a teacher calls your parents, you're in trouble. I come from a very strict British education system, essay writing all day long. And so, some of our students come from that system, from India, even from Iran. Iran is even a hybrid, it's French and British, meaning you have to take the exam, the concours, to go to college. But what I discovered, and I think this is something that can help us, is, and, and the reason why you're seeing more colleges, the parents looking into colleges, that within those groups, like my group, you, when we came here, we didn't know anyone, we didn't know anyone who went through the system. So, we were kind of lost. I mean, I applied for one university, Cal State Northridge, and I thought I got into Harvard, because I didn't know any others, not knocking CSUN, but not knowing the system. Had I known what it requires, had I known, because that network wasn't there. Now, over the years, the network has grown, because now the individuals, like myself, get involved and tell students and parents, hey, this is how you have to do it. So, in its essence, it's very organic. And I think in order to really grow this, we have to also invest in the specialists, but also individuals who come from the same experience. In that class at MIR, the person who was the specialist helping us, she came through Germany, she is from the same year, you know, same experience, so we could relate, and she can understand what the challenges are, because a lot of the students I was seeing, at least from Armenian speaking, came recently from Armenia, or you get some from, you know, Iran, you know, a lot of Syria now. But the point I'm making that I think for us, the approach has to be also looking to these little, you know, clusters and trying to find the individuals can, not only the students, but the parents can relate to. And I, and I'll tell you why, because when I, with me, it was, you know, because the parents didn't speak the language, I could basically go back and say, oh, this is not a tardy paper, this is like, I did very well, kind of a paper, right? You know, because you grew up in such a strict education system, then you come here, I mean, I was shocked when someone told me, you can walk out of the school and no one will stop you, kind of in that essence, right? And I think for us, we've kind of turned a leaf now, because now the parents are more interested in colleges. And I can tell that East LA College, we deal also with a large community of immigrants, but now that's changing too, because now the parents have given access, you know, more information in different languages, more members of the community who have common stories to share, to get involved, because that's the commonality. You know, time is important, I get it, because its parents are working three, four jobs, language is important. And one thing people forget, a lot of these parents are very educated, but because they don't speak the language well, to them, they sometimes feel like that's a sign of they're not educated, because they cannot communicate their thoughts. And I'm not even getting into the translating. If you speak four languages, like I do, when you're translating to English, it's complicated, especially from languages like Farsi and Armenian, which are like French on steroids, because it's very, very descriptive. So, sometimes that itself becomes an issue. And I think those are the things that, you know, once we get those individuals, the specialists or individuals who are involved more, who come from the same stories, to do and talk more about it, then I think that will help us too. But I'm very happy, because I'm seeing now the, the evolution of no longer just go to school, now it's about college, now it's about, what about my kid, what did I have to do to get into better schools now? And I think this is wonderful, but I also think that for us, you know, we need to really look at the importance of what these programs bring to our schools. As Thomas Friedman said, in today's market, going in, you know, it's like going to Olympics, except you have to be good at every sport. So, speaking a second language or third, now it's an advantage, where the first thing people told me when I came here was, do not speak your mother language or any other language. So, I'm glad things are turning now, well, you know, I've been, I'm old, I've been here for a while, but, but I'm, I've seen the change, and I'm happy that we're doing this. And, you know, I'm glad some of our schools are doing this as well. And I think within that also, we need to also, Dr. Knopfik, really bring back the cultural festivals that we do. I know Edison, you know, has grown into a big one, Miller, because that itself also breaks the barriers, you know? I always say food and music breaks all the barriers, you know? Well, but thank you very much for all you're doing, this is very close to my heart. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you very much for your, for your presentation. First things first, it sounds like you're juggling a lot, and just thank you, because that, you know, we're all making it work. I think we're identifying where it's not working. So, I was happy to hear the superintendent, you know, offer possibly using one-time funds to try and address this, if not, just as a stopgap measure. I, I'm very supportive of that, frankly, as I think the journey towards reclassification in particular requires many touches, not just with, obviously educators, but obviously with the parents and building a community. Some of the discussion tonight also has talked about the cultural differences related to education, and again, resulting in the need for additional touches and ones that are informed on the different cultural communities in which we support. So, I'm definitely supportive in, in that regard. This is a population that I, I think we have the ability to, and we have in so many ways, really define a standard for them, and, and I'm happy to hear on a few fronts. I saw some of the questions. So, first on the survey data, I think in this past year, the past two years, surveys are just kind of, they're going to be all over the map. Having said that, we're seeing pretty consistently that surveys aren't working as a method of soliciting feedback, in a way that they may have been before. Additionally, I think what we're trying to measure for in so many different ways, and in so many different silos of the district's operations, is qualitative and not necessarily always quantitative. As a result, that requires more man-hours and hours to analyze, synthesize, and digest, and then report out. And that's a difficult challenge when you are cutting positions and, and going through that. First, I have to say, and jumping briefly, no findings is, is such an incredible accomplishment. So, to Dr. Knopfik, Ms. Koenberg, I cannot thank you guys enough for the due diligence that you've done on behalf of this community and on behalf of the kids of this district. That, that compliance secures us funding and secures fundamentally resources for these kiddos to have a better experience while they are here and with us. So, I, I just, I recognize that, it is a very highly technical thing, but not all heroes wear capes, and, and the two of you deserve capes, so just saying, thank you very, very So, on the survey front, I'm wondering, just generally, if there's a conversation ahead for us as a leadership team to discuss our methods of outreach. I, I think that, I'm not saying this from a critical perspective, I think that for a very long time, surveys worked. But I think what we are increasingly seeing, whether it's our politics, or whether it's how we operate, or the communities in which we surround ourselves with, people get to choose that pathway. So, the question becomes, when enrollment packets are filled out, is there a way to say, do you want to fill out surveys via text message? Do you want to do it online? Do you want to do it through social media? And then, tagging families so that they then are communicated with in a method that they are most likely to participate in. I think by doing that, one, we can identify kind of the short-term infrastructure, we may need texting platforms, things like that, that may make it easier. But with a lot of one-time money, I think some of that could be funded, I think, in very reasonable ways. And, and it would allow us to get deeper response and more informed responses. We may also want to consider layering potential consultants who can come in and help teach how to communicate through these different, through these varying methods. As a text message, you're not going to send eight paragraphs, right? And it, online, you may, you may have a different format. I say that only because, again, like, I'm seeing low survey results across the board, and while it's challenging, I have to say, when I look at the data as a result, I have to be informed and go, this isn't representative of necessarily all the stories that are being told. That being said, that then relegates all of this to a guessing game, and that becomes hard too, when this is a population, we have a critical responsibility of serving and serving well. I don't doubt that the intention's there, I don't even doubt that the hard work is there. But as, as leaders, I don't feel informed in the way that I But as leaders, I don't feel informed in the way that I should, not through any negligence on anybody's part, but purely just because of the state of things. And I'd like to see if we can hone that to get more accurate information so that we can make informed decisions with clearly tight, tight resources. There were some questions within the parent survey in particular, and I wanted to follow up. I believe it was earlier this year. It's a blur, so forgive me. And if I get this wrong, again, I got it wrong, sorry. But I believe there are new standards for classic, reclassification. Was it this year or last?
I think three years ago.
Okay, see?
But the problem is that the, last year, we didn't administer the CASP, SBAK, whatever we want to call it.
Okay.
And the year before, we didn't, we'd gotten through part of it. So, and that was one of the criteria. Oh, coming up though, next year, I believe, they're going, CDE is rolling out a new way of judging student proficiency across different subject matters.
Got it.
So maybe that's what you were thinking of.
Yes, thank you, thank you for offering that. I think that was. And so I wanted to see if there were questions from parents around that. It seemed like there were questions generally about, as Dr. Agarconian referenced, right, long-term college planning, all of that. And then it, I believe in your presentation, it said phases of learning English. Was that a part of it or is this a, is this a different kind of a part of the conversation? Are there other ways that?
Well, the, learning about the stages of language acquisition leads naturally to reclassification.
Okay.
When, what we use to judge whether a student is fluent.
Right.
In English, and those criteria are set by the state. So it's really good that we, that parents know that, they know what the goal is. And when the kids get older, like middle school and high school, they need to know what the goal is too.
Yeah.
I had to talk to some high schoolers last year and this year and say, I know you're not taking the test seriously, but this is what it's showing us. It's like if you score a certain, this level, then you're not eligible to be reclassified. And they're like, well, can I take it again? I'm like, oh, it's a state test.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to see if that was kind of one in the same as, as we're talking about resources being pushed out to parents, all of that. So that, that's just helpful for me. But overall, I just, I think that this next coming year, or this coming school year is really a, and I'm going to do air quotes, but back to normal, so to speak. I, you know, we, I think we're all living with COVID differently now. And some people are severely traumatized frankly, by what this put their family through, what this put loved ones through. You've got other folks who are so tired of wearing masks and couldn't care less anymore. And you've got the full spectrum and everybody's feelings are both valid and raw. Having said that, I think everybody wants to get back to normal, whatever their definition of normal looks like. At school, though, we've learned, I think education just generally has been turned on its head in how we need to think about how we serve students and serve these populations. So I think if we can commit this year to at least trying to figure out how to better engage so we can get better data to make decisions, that would be huge. But in the meantime, I think this population has a ton of catch-up to do, like other populations that need support, especially after the pandemic. And if one-time money can be allocated to alleviate some of this stress, I think anybody would agree four schools is a, is a lot and at a minimum. And, and these kids deserve better.
Just quickly, because I didn't really have any questions and my colleagues have already discussed things I did note, but I second what Mr. Ferguson said about the, you know, no findings, you know, was fantastic. And the work you've done on this is fantastic. I also, I agree that, you know, and we've seen, I think, as far as surveys go, we've seen gradually over time, a decline in, in response and how well the data goes. I recall at some point in the conversations, not through this one, but talking about trying to reach people where they are now. And you referenced like social media and, you know, texting. And so, yeah, maybe that is a very valid discussion that we should be having and moving forward, and especially with this community, because I think they're, they're probably less inclined, you know, always to feel comfortable responding. So I, you mentioned the cultural differences and things of that nature. So I do, you know, make sure that we are able to, you know, get feedback from them on an appropriate level. But otherwise, thank you for, you know, some really great work.
You're welcome.
Finally, it's my turn. Really great information and a lot of work went into it and on top of everything else that you and Dr. Knappich do. My colleague said you deserve capes and it's true. It is, it is one of the most interesting groups to work with, our ELD students. They are hungry for information. They're hungry to be more proficient, is the best way of putting it, at the language that they're trying to get an education with. It's, it's not easy. Once a long time ago, I was an ELD teacher. So, but, but they're fun, they're great kids. It's a, you're in a lucky place, I think, to be there. And I, and hats off really to all our educators who work with subgroups in the district. It's an added challenge already, you know, to what the normal day is. So thank you for that. Thank you for the great report. And I'm so excited going forward, you know, where we are and where we're going to continue going. It seems like it's all, you know, moving in a, in a positive way. And I think that's awesome. And it will continue, it seems, with our two superheroes at the helm. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
To attend B, report on COVID-19 protocols and procedures for overnight field trips. Dr. Hill.
At a previous board meeting, the board asked for this policy to come back for a board discussion, so I'll hand it back to you.
Why, thank you. We did, we had some parents come and ask us to bring forward this policy for a discussion. It is not an action item. It is a discussion. And if at some point the board wishes to make it an action item, we'd have to agendize that at another meeting. So, but surely it, it deserves some discussion. So if anybody has a thought or something they'd like to bring up, I'm, we should all hear it. Yes, Dr. Weisberg.
So just as a point of clarification, because parents are asking for us to act, we need to agendize this. I mistakenly thought it was agendized. So next board meeting, if it's possible to do that, I think we should, because I know there's time constraints.
I think it might be for this group that asked, it might be too late at the next meeting. I think their cheer camp is the first to the fourth.
So.
So this is a, a report. It is not an action item.
What, I'm confused as to why it ended up on the agenda, not as an action item. When we, when we did talk specifically about addressing it as a board, as far as either making changes or keeping it the same, I think we were pretty clear last time we met about this. I'm just, I'm, I am confused as to why it's not. I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just trying to understand why.
No worries.
We are not voting on it or discussing it.
You can even point fingers, it's okay.
I, no interest, I have poor hand-eye coordination.
Well, if I may jump in, I think the board can have a discussion and give guidance to staff to change, because this is protocols that we give out, it's administrative protocols.
Okay.
So we're making this decision anyway.
Okay, okay.
So you can give us guidance. Since it's on the agenda, you have a discussion, give us guidance on how to change this.
Okay. Perfect.
In that light, does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Also, I mean, this is not me trying to toss the football at all, but I do want to hear from staff in regards to, I mean, look, we know foundationally, numbers are rising. It looks like probably next week, masks are going to go back to being mandatory. Cases are in, I think it was like 1,300 new reported hospitalizations. So with all of that, I would love to hear, Dr. Hill, Dr. Paramo, if you could speak a little bit about your perspective and then we can continue the conversation.
If you don't mind, I think that's a great idea.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Well, I would defer to the board. This is a board discussion. I really don't think I should jump in before the board has an opportunity to discuss. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but as far as my staff's view on the policy, there's questions about.
That's fine.
If the majority board wants me to weigh in, I'm happy to do, but this initiated from the board level to put in a policy about overnight trips. So I think it's appropriate for you all to have that conversation first and then.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess my, where my concern sits is, it's twofold. I want to acknowledge how important this is. It's hugely important. And I think you hit the nail on the head, you know, little things are big, so big things are huge because of the last couple of years. So I teach middle school, so I know, I don't have kids of my own, but I see how, how important these moments are. Where I'm struggling, so I don't want you to, whatever we're talking about, I want you to know, and all the parents who spoke, how deeply, how seriously we take these decisions. We just do, keeps us up. My concern primarily with changing overnight trip policy now is how do we say no when the year starts? Because I was talking this out, like in the summer, we're not in school, so the risk is lower, right? Great. But then we go back to school and there's no, the conversation is still the same. Well, how come people could go to cheer camp and not be vaccinated, but I can't go to science camp or whatever it is? And so I don't, I don't enjoy saying no at all. But I am worried, we're very close to school going back to, going back in session, and I appreciate all of the hurdles parents are willing to jump through. I know that's not taken lightly, but I am, I'm concerned about the health and safety of all of our students and I worry that this could be a domino.
That's an interesting perspective, though. I hadn't thought when we started sort of discussing this, that it would be a policy that we would change for summer only. I hadn't thought about that. I thought if, my thoughts were if we changed the policy, it would be going forward until we changed it another way.
Oh.
But that's, no, it was.
I got you.
It's something I hadn't thought of.
I got you.
And I spent a lot of time thinking about this. I thought about, you know, in this case, cheer camp is outside. So does that make a difference? And then I thought, but, yeah, right. Well, and then I thought, well, we've placed an importance in this district on vaccinations. We require our employees to be vaccinated to come to work. And so then I thought, well, how do I say it's okay for kids, student athletes, to go to an overnight camp, but then say to employees, no, no, you can't come to work unless you're vaccinated? And, and that didn't work. It kept, you know, they kept blocking each other. It, it was really hard.
It is hard.
Because here, here's what, and I think this was a conversation I overheard prior to the meeting started, but, you know, when we made some decisions last year, we based those on information and research we had at that time. And now I had, now a year later, the importance of a vaccine, as I see it, is that it doesn't mean that I'm not going to catch it, right? It just means, well, for a point there, I thought it would reduce the risk. But what it really does is reduce the.
The severity.
The severity of it, right?
It meant that you weren't going to go to the hospital.
Right. So, so if you think about that, well then, what, you know, then if somebody chooses not, of course, and I'm, I'm in favor of vaccines, but if someone chooses not to, then the end result is they just get sicker if they get it, because, you know.
Or die.
Right. The process, the thought is we're all going to get it eventually. So I don't know. It went round and round, this conversation with myself.
Yeah.
And I don't know that, so it comes really back to if I change this, then I don't want to change it for employees, so that doesn't work for me.
I am done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I think actually vaccines reduce both your chances of getting infected and your, how sick you will get when you, if you do still get infected. You're right, no one likes saying no. You know, no one likes, these are important times in students' lives and we absolutely understand the mental health aspect of not having been able to participate over the last few years. But we did make difficult choices in the last year for the safety and health of our staff and our students. It is, we got a little bit comfortable, everyone got a little comfortable as vaccines did get, you know, penetrated the, the community. People weren't wearing masks, you know, you were able to, you talked about normal. That's what people felt like, oh, we're getting back to our normal life. Well, we're seeing what's happening. The numbers, we are almost certainly, you know, going to hear in another week that LA County is going back to indoor mask mandates. We have seen, even with our, the restrictions we had in place, a overnight field trip with people who are vaccinated turned into something of a spreader event. I, I know it's difficult for the people who have opposition to vaccines, but I don't feel this is a time that we can afford to go backwards. I think as, what success we have had in being able to maintain and operate is in great part due to the choices we made during the last year, both as for, you know, field trips, for, you know, vaccinating employees. And I don't feel this is an appropriate time to move backwards.
First off, I do want to thank you, Ms. Tabit, for bringing this conversation, because I think the motivation has always been, especially as I've known you, especially with students and activities, you know what those activities do in students' lives. And ensuring there's access to those activities for all students, I know has motivated you from a, from a very deep, personal place. And so I think the conversation at a minimum is warranted and I appreciate that. I echo the sentiments a little bit of my colleagues on a few fronts. One, I think when it comes to vaccination rates, we know it's a conversation. We know that it is deeply divisive in, in some households. But fundamentally, I have to think about this from a public policy perspective and zoom out and think about how we educate people as to the importance and what a flip-flop would do to that kind of communication moving forward. We advocate the importance of vaccines in one situation, then we dial it back depending on conditions. Vaccines are either useful or they are not. That's a binary state and there is disagreement to that. But we have consistently found that vaccines are useful in, in the cause of combating this pandemic. It doesn't mean that I want to short-change students and their experiences. And unfortunately, I think there's so many different decisions that we've had to make where unfortunately, that's a side effect or a direct impact of our decision-making. And that's what's made it, I think frankly, extremely hard to be a leader in education, whether you're on this dais or not. Having said that, again, I think flipping one way and then unfortunately undoing it only to redo it, potentially if there's a high case or God forbid, an outbreak that's serious on a field trip, also makes it harder for our administrators to, to administer this and make it stick, so to speak. So I want to acknowledge again, I think the motivation came from the right place for this conversation. And I think frankly, it's probably good to check in quarterly on the policies in which we're implementing and not to add against, sorry, additional work, but it probably is good based off of conditions as summer months are going to be different than, in terms of how it impacts our campus communities and the workloads that they are managing. So I think that's, that's fundamentally where I, where I'm at. If I could hit an easy button and send everybody to camp, I think we're all there. think we're all there. But I, I think in terms of, if we want to get to a place long-term where vaccines are the norm, as it is with many other diseases that this country has managed successfully, I, I think it's, it's hard to step back.
If I could, thank you for talking about it's okay to look at policy. It's also okay for the community, for parents, for anyone to say, hey, can you check out that policy again? Can you go back and revisit that?
Agreed.
That's okay. Ask anytime about anything that we've set up. It's, you know, things do change. Ideas change. Philosophies change. And it's okay to go back and revisit. And thank you for the kind words. This one kills me. You know, it's really hard. So, I don't like to say no. That's the way I raised my own children. You say off, yes, as often as you can. And hopefully, when you say no, that they go, okay, I got it, you know? I'm not, you know, anyway, this is a tough one.
Can I, can I make a recommendation that we maintain the current policy and bring it back before the end of the fall semester for review, if that works for you? And, and I also thank you to the superintendent for kicking this back to the board. I think it's important that we're able to have these conversations. And I know it's hard on you and the administrative team to always enforce these things, and I want to welcome that feedback where we can. But appreciate that, because I think that this is definitely a community-related conversation. People definitely will vote for people based off of what their views are on this issue. And as a result, I think, you know, it is, it is a conversation for this level. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. 10C, report on Board Bylaw 9270, conflict of interest. Yes, please go. It was your request.
Yes. So, I, I think it's healthy for every institution to have limits, especially on governing board members who are elected, to act independently in the interests of the district. I think this is long overdue. I would like to see this passed. And, and I want to thank staff or whoever put this, pulled at least the initial language together. It looks like as a result of the language, this is a first step, and there will be additional conversations ahead as to what conflicts look like, et cetera. But I think this is an important policy to have on the books. And for us to kind of, again, police ourselves, be the transparent agency that we need to be for the members of the public.
And I just want to clarify, we, we pulled the existing bylaw, 9270. So, I just wanted to see if there's, if there's, you, you asked to review this conflict of interest, if you want to make some specific changes to that. And we didn't put any changes into this for it.
So, yes. So, there is a, so there is a component of it that, that talks about what the board would like to perceive as a conflict. So, that's specifically what I will reference. And what I would like to introduce is that if a board member is either an owner of, or a board member of, a nonprofit or a business organization that does business on a school site, or on any district property, that that be restricted, that, that a board member not be able to operate a business, nonprofit or otherwise, on school sites while they serve. That's a specific revision I'd like to see.
I have questions. So, I don't know why we're looking at that. There is already Form 700 that we have to fill out every year, reporting any kind of an interest. And I think, so can I repeat the language again? The non-pro, if you're a member of a nonprofit, or?
So, if you are, whether you own a company, or serve on the board of a nonprofit organization, and that nonprofit or business attempts to do business on a district property, that a board member needs to recuse themselves from that, or should not be allowed to be able to do that.
So.
You can't run a business if you're a board member on our school sites and profit from it, or direct profit to nonprofits. And by the way, yes, you cited the Form 700. If we raise money on behalf of a nonprofit, we have to report that as well. So, this is a standard that's actually relatively common, but it is not expressed in our bylaws currently. And it's something that I believe should.
So, let me be clear. So, if I'm a school board member, and I serve on, let's say, local Boys and Girls Club board, I should be, I should be, I should say no?
That's what Mr. Ferguson said.
Yeah.
No.
No, no. I don't think that's what he said.
Yeah, I need a little bit of clarification.
So, this is about people who primarily control or run businesses fundamentally. So, if you run a business, whether it be a nonprofit or a business, and, and again, if you were a board member of a nonprofit who did business, you would have to recuse yourself legally anyway from any contractual votes that were occurring. So, that's already in the.
I'm voting for the contractual votes.
Well, that's, that's how we, that's how we participate. So, so this, so this would say, if you primarily own a business, or if you own a business and you're a board member, that business cannot do business on school sites. As long as you serve.
What if, what if it's a corporation, and I'm a part of the corporation?
He said business.
Or corporation.
Yeah, but corporation, I could be a board member, and I don't, I mean, the reason I'm asking is because there are laws in terms of what percentage of that business you own. If I'm a corporation owner, and I only own 10% of it, does that stop me from that corporation doing business?
Do you think board members should profit from doing business on school sites?
No, but, no, but, but, yeah, but.
At any percentage?
No, but you have to be a little more specific. You're, because now you're getting into the legal part. That's why Form 700 is there for. The state has already figured this out. It's called the Form 700. You fill that out, you, if you profit anything, you put it in there, and if the state finds out there's a conflict, they'll penalize you. You can go to prison for that.
So, so.
I'm, I'm just trying to see why we're reinventing.
I want to recuse myself from this conversation before we do any further, because I sit on the board, and last year I became the owner of.
Your mic. Your mic. Say it again.
I said, I sit on the board of a nonprofit that uses our school sites, and last year I became the owner, well, partial owner.
This is the tree lot?
Yeah, even though it doesn't make money. Do I, do I need to recuse myself from this conversation?
I think if you intend on running that business again on a school site, then this probably is a conflict.
Okay. So, in the best interest, it's probably better if I wait till this conversation's over. Just to be on the safe side.
If, if you're going to recuse yourself, there are specific instructions for that. And you've disclosed why you would recuse yourself, but the next step would be, you would have to, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, leave the room. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, to Armon, to your, or Dr. Conia, I'm sorry, to your point, I think part of the conversation here is about, I mean, optics isn't the right word, but as board members, I do think we, we need to hold ourselves to as high standards as possible, so that when we do make votes or decisions as a board, the reasons behind those decisions don't get called into question. And I'm not implying at any point that any board member thus far has made a decision that solely because it benefits them. Not saying that. But I am saying that we, as we've already done tonight, right? We have difficult conversations. We make different, difficult decisions. And I think we need to make sure that when we make decisions as a board, that they are as ethical as possible, and that we don't in any way personally benefit from those things. So, to me, I, I understand what you're saying about Form 700. But to me, there's no downside in adding an extra layer of clarity in regards to what we can and can't do. I mean, I don't, I don't, to me, there's not a negative part of it, other than just saying, like, don't benefit financially off of the district that you serve as a public servant.
Okay. So, I think our attorney should look at this. And I'll give you a simple example. Let's say I work for Warner Brothers, and I invest in their stocks. Therefore, I am partly owner of the company. Warner Brothers does for business for Burbank. Doesn't mean I have to recuse myself and, and stay and not be on this board? I mean, I really want our attorney to look at this. I own, I own stocks in a bunch of companies that do business with, well, we all do. Part of our retirement packages include stocks that get invested. Does that mean all of us here have to recuse ourselves because they're profiting, because they're working with the district?
To clarify, the Form 700 actually expresses that, that if you own over a certain percentage, I believe that's 10%, that you then do have to recuse yourself. So, there is under, again, but, but we're talking also, again, the ability to generate profit off of a school site. If you send an email as the owner or board member of that institution, and let's say you send it to the superintendent, is the superintendent answering the head of that corporation, or his boss? That's a real conflict.
What's the superintendent's?
And that's a terror, that's not how you set up an administrative team for success. And God forbid you use your district email in that process.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, go ahead.
Let's, let's talk to Mr. Fretner, and then we can, I'll come up to you.
I agree with the thought process that we would, we do want transparency. We want, you know, to be clear of the operations of the district. I, I do have some concerns because a lot of us have served with nonprofits, and on the boards of nonprofits, that have worked with the school district, you know, and, 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 you know, often to the benefit of the district and/or, you know, groups. So, I might, rather than saying, you know, that nonprofit, you know, couldn't do business with the district at all, I might prefer clarifying language saying, you know, it's, it's got to be brought before the board and voted on before any contract, you know, and the, you know, the personal connection needs to be identified clearly, so that it's, it's, it's clear and it's open, and, and also what, you know, how, how any payments might work. Because, and by the way, I would only consider it in the service of nonprofit. It should, you know, there should never be any kind of profitable business. But, you know, what, you know, what's, where's the money going to? And how, and if it fits the mission of the district, then, you know, at least we are being, we would be open and transparent, and we could, you know, the rest, and of course, that person would have to recuse themselves, you know, at a vote. I, I just, I don't want to shut the door completely on, I don't know if that's what, I thought I'd heard you say it, but I didn't want to put words in your mouth either. So, I.
I, I think that, you know, the challenge is, is that when we think nonprofit, we think of the mission, usually, of an organization. Boys and Girls Club, family service agency, right? How could you ever want to recuse yourself from, from giving, okay, I get that. But for many people, I would think that they would think, for instance, in this case, a tree lot is a for-profit business. And just because it happens to be organized in a nonprofit way, that doesn't negate the ability of that nonprofit to pay and to give direct profit to an individual. It, it doesn't prevent a lot of different factors. And, and so, I think when it comes to conflicts of interest, I get it. We all serves on, serve on boards and, and organizations, and we want to work, and, and where that can bring people together, I get that that's a motivation. And I don't think that's a, a poor motivation. But I, I think the reality is, is that we have to understand that if we are playing the role of, of both a board member of that institution, and a board member of this institution, who wins? And when you're elected to public office, and, and you are responsible for an institution that is greater than yourself and directly belongs to the community, not a specific group of donors, but instead the community, and then you potentially have situations where you send an email with the district email, you are now using district resources and taxpayer money to control the financial destiny of another organization, no matter how you look, no matter how you cut it. And so, I'm not saying that, let's say you own a business, and you want to do it. Okay. I, to me, I think recusal is a first step. But if we allow that business to move forward, is it because of the relationship that that board member has with the four of us? Doesn't that make all of our integrity tank at that moment? Instead of saying, I, I got you next. If you have a controlling interest, or if you're serving on, again, like, I, I think that that's, to me, it's pretty clear. But I can see that there's, there's some disagreement with my colleagues.
I'm not disagree, I think we really need to bring the, the attorney in really, because I can go even as far as, well, if I give to the Burbank, I give every month money to the Burbank Education Foundation, right? And if, if they're using part of their stewardship fees, let's say 10%, which is the profits, to hire someone, then that, is that a conflict? Or we are the same? I mean, I, to me, this has to really.
I, I'd just say there's a difference between being a donor and being a board member, you know, controlling the direction of the organization.
I feel like we're delving into the land of hypotheticals, and it's not super helpful. So, it sounds to me like we're talking perhaps about two separate things. Please stop me if I'm wrong. Recusal from votes is, if you, perhaps if you sit on a board of an organization, and then not earning money on a school site while you are a sitting board member, right? So, to me, those two things are separate. So, and I think we are all smart enough people to know when to do one and when to do the other. But I think, to me, there's no downside in saying, and again, I wanted to echo what Mr. Ferguson said, I think it puts staff in a really awkward position at times if we're asking them to navigate which role we happen to be playing at that particular moment. And again, the more ethical, the more transparent, the more above-board we can be, the better. So, for me, I think as long as we can, sounds like, if we can be clear about what we mean when we say, like, what constitutes recusal, and what constitutes, like, hey, this, you, you can't do this because you will make a financial profit off of it. Because to me, sure, I guess you could report it on Form 700, but it's still ethically, like, problematic that you're, that you're using your, and, and you know that we're, I mean, we're not talking about owning stock in something. We're talking about running something on a site that you will benefit financially from personally.
But, but I think having attorneys look at it, because it's, law is how you interpret it. So, someone can interpret this in a wrong way. I think the language has to be solid enough.
So, what if we, what if we write these two things, and then if we need to, we have the lawyer help?
I mean, the lawyer.
Well, the specific example that's being discussed, we did run that through our attorney of, as long as any, if, if a facilities use agreement is filed through a normal process, and there's transparency, and if someone has an interest and they're part of that facilities use agreement, they need to report it on Form 7. So, that, that is alignment with your current board policy.
Great.
What I'm trying to take notes is, it sounds like you want to change that, and I am not clear yet. So, especially on the nonprofits. So, if a board member is on the board of a nonprofit, are you saying they can, that nonprofit can no longer do facilities use agreements?
No, 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 no. I think, I think what we're saying is, let's say you're on the Boys and Girls Club, woo, the board, and then there's a vote that the board is taking about some sort of thing with the board, then you just recuse yourself.
And that's your current, that's already, that's your current bylaws, so we don't need to make any changes.
That's great. That's good. That's why I was asking for clarification.
Yeah. So, in your current bylaws of, if you have a conflict of interest, and this bylaw is clear, that says you must recuse yourself.
Great.
If so, if you're, any conflict of interest, nonprofit, for-profit. What I'm getting to is this, I'm, Mr. Ferguson was talking more about facilities use agreements. That's the, that's what we're using now. To have any organization use our facilities, for-profit or nonprofit, they must fill out a facilities use agreement? And can you help clarify?
Sure. And I'm saying, if you have a school board member who serves on the board of that institution, that that should not be allowed to use at that point. So, board members for the duration of their term would not be serving on these, on these institutions, and as a result, having those conflicts. If they, if they wanted to ensure that that organization had access to a school site for potential profit-making.
And the other clarification, so it's, if you're on the board of a nonprofit, if you're the majority owner of a business, not if you're, you're employer, that's the other thing I just want to clarify.
I think that's challenging.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think that's challenging, because I hate saying it, like, everybody just structures it the way they need to, to scapegoat, or to get around any rules that we have. So, a controlling interest, 10%, it's money in your pocket potentially. And, and if you have in any way influence or control over how that organization is managed, and that is in conflict potentially with how the district is, I, again, like, what is, what's the big deal of saying, hey, for eight years, you're going to put it on ice? For four years, you're going to put it on ice and not serve on a board, and put the priority of voters who elected you first?
Because it is the interpretation. If I work, again, for Warner Brothers, and I own stocks, and they're using our facilities for filming, they're profiting, then I shouldn't be on the board?
I, no, I, I think the other way around. You shouldn't be working with Warner Brothers if you're going to choose to run to serve the public on the board. In that.
So, so, does, I don't want to put you on the spot, but does Disney do business in the district? With the district? With the district?
He doesn't own Disney.
But again, he works for them.
And Disney doesn't do...
But do you understand my point?
They make charitable contributions. They don't do work for the district.
Okay, so I work for Warner, let's say, and I have stock options. And Warner comes and says, we want to rent one of your facilities to shoot a film and we're going to pay all the fees. Does that mean that I have to quit my job?
So if you have, well, no, because again, you're not on the board of it. You just work for it.
But I'm a stockholder, but as a stockholder, I technically am on the board.
I can't, I can't follow every single scenario you throw.
It is the law. It is the law. You're really, again, that's why the lawyers have to look.
It's not that. I think you're conflating, you know, board positions with stock ownership, which is different. And one does not always result in the other. And yes, there is state law pertaining to ownership related to stocks. I'm saying if you are on the leadership team of an institution who could seek to profit off of the use of school sites while you are also on the board of education and signing off on those agreements, that's a conflict. And that is what in this policy should be prohibited for the duration of an individual service on the board.
But I'm going back to the interpretation. There has to be, again, I can, I just interpreted for you the Warner Brother example, which legally it's true because...
You just created the example.
No, it's not. I am a stockholder. If I, if I own stocks in a company, I am partly an owner of that company, aren't I? If you own stocks in a company...
But you don't control their operations.
Yes, yes.
You can't...
You vote for board members who do that as a stockholder.
And if you're a stockholder of an incredibly large corporation and you have a very small amount of stock, you can't really swing the direction of a company. Whereas if a very small company...
Steve, I'm concerned about other attorneys, other people, it's the interpretation that concerns me because technically, yes.
Dr. Hill, after you're done, so sorry.
No, I'll make sure. I'm clear now in the language that you want and I'll just ask that question to our attorney.
Without objection from the board on that front? So that way the language is legally sound? Thank you, Dr. Hill. Anything?
No, I have no objection and I think it's fine to put it that way because eventually it would have to come back to us anyways. And it could be further discussed once we, especially once we see further language. So I'm okay with that.
Thank you and looking forward to that conversation. And thank you, Dr. Agakonian.
Thank you.
I know we wrestle on this, but this is, this is the work. So with that, if we could get President Tabbett back so she can run the rest of the meeting.
Okay. So we're moving on to 10D. Superintendent's Environmental Action Committee SEAC update. Mrs. Katka.
Good evening, President Tabbett, board members, administrative staff and community. Tonight, I really appreciate being introduced to the chairperson of our, started out as the Superintendent Sustainability Committee, which now, obviously, we've seen this transition with the name and I'll let Karen Law explain that. She was elected unanimously by the committee to serve, and I have to say, this is a very passionate group of about 20 people that are...
Hard to corral, so she's taken on quite a task. But if I could have her step up and she's got a PowerPoint for you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, this, this is the fun part of the evening because it's last night. Greetings, board, Superintendent Hill, district members. Okay, so do I just start? It's the forward one.
Maybe you're up.
Oh, okay, great. Awesome. Okay, so, let's see. So the intention of this presentation, to give you an idea of what we're, why we exist, what we're doing and where we're heading. So why now? So right now, there is a lot of funding or LAUSD is providing funding, 500 million specifically to go towards green spaces in light of everything that's happened with COVID and the emotional landscape and health-wise of our students. And here's another article about more federal funding for sustainability. So there's lots of opportunity for, for us to take advantage of. So there's opportunities for grants, regional collaboratives are around, and, you know, Burbank is in a place where we are upstream of the LA River. It gives us an opportunity, like, we are connected to the oceans, mountains and all these different ecosystems, and we have an impact here. So this is also an opportunity for us to be a leader, a collaborator and partner with all these willing organizations, the city and nonprofits and community organizations. So on the education side of things, there's, you know, the need for leadership, social justice equals environmental justice. We all know that and it's, our DEI principles are put into practice. Environmental literacy is a policy that is being worked on in Oakland because there's career pathways that need to be addressed. And so these are just all these opportunities available in keeping up with the times and addressing the climate emergency. So on the environmental side, all our Burbank school sites are, you know, black asphalt, huge urban heat sinks, and these are things that the EPA are trying to address. Outdoor learning spaces, we all know, or the general statistic is that outdoor learning spaces increases academic performance generally by 15%. It, you know, it allows people to connect to nature, which is very emotional, which is very important for emotional, mental, physical health. And a student's environment, their direct ecosystem is a reflection of their future world that they want to create. And so we get to set the example. So what else? Again, electrifying our transportation fleet is also part of the renewable energy, more EV, solar charging. All that comes into play when a student looks and feels and, you know, walks around their school and it's a place to be proud of if their school and their environment district reflects those values. So on the student side of things, we are looking at, you know, we're talking about the mental health, emotional health, and my children and my associate's children, they have anxiety. I don't know if others have experienced this, have anxiety when going to school, like, the world is burning and I don't know what's, what we're doing about it. I've heard from children, students from Borough's Eco Club saying, you know, you've let us down. It was a very tragic comment to hear. So, you know, in action, in taking leadership to say that, okay, there's a district recognition, acknowledgement that we see this as going on, it tells a student that, hey, we care about your future. And, and they also expect more from leadership. They also expect more from their teachers, from their staff, from board members to say that, hey, you know, this, this is where we're heading and I'm proud to be at the school district. So, so just to give you a backstory of like, and this is really quick, just some projects, eco projects that have come about from, from different school sites. A lot of these are gardening projects because it's, it's something that volunteers, parents have access to. Miller has an eco club. They put on a seven-minute film about microplastics, like, what is the title, Go Go Green Girl versus Microplastic Medusa. You know, kindergarten to the fourth graders put, created a skit and they filmed it and edited it. There's SB 1383, which is a state law saying that we need to get organics out of the landfill. And there's this sorting and we did a food waste study on it. The Eco Council has done two Earth Day events in the past two years for the entire district to learn, to connect. This was the food waste with the report. So there's links on the presentation if you want to get more in detail about that. So there's a, there's a history of independent action on, on all the environmental projects. And so the vision is for, it would be great to see BUSD and in general Burbank to have, to be a green school district. And on the, and it would go along in accordance with the state and federal BOE practice. Would love to be a leader in the sense, improving the students' holistic health, decarbonize, reducing urban heat output, increasing renewable energy, engaging in STEM education, finding green pathways of career development. So these are the three pillars that both on state level and federal level, and they're all about increasing the STEM education, reducing environmental impact and improving health and wellness. And that is really the bottom line, is to increase the health and wellness of our environment and our students. These are just pathways of how to do that. Air quality, water quality, water capture, energy, STEM education. Ooh, and there we go. Yep, of course. Yeah. I don't, you know, all this is to create like a resilient, robust system, you know, as evident in our tech. So, so the structure right now is we have monthly meetings, third Mondays, that's from 7:00 to 8:30 on Zoom. Members are created from the community. Tree People is a huge partner that Debbie has helped develop a relationship with and potential grant collaboration, board members, staff, teachers and such. And so what has been done? So we had, we initially called ourselves the Sustainability Committee, but in the environmental world, sustainability is a byproduct of the action. So in order to keep up with the times, we voted and our new name is the Superintendent's Environmental Action Committee. Debbie noted that it also stands for the School Employers Association of California, but we're, but the, the, the work, yeah, the work output is very different. So I don't think there was going to be any confusion there. The subcommittees that have formed, we only have had two meetings so far, so the subcommittees have formed are the SB 1383, compliance with organic sorting. There's a committee on district energy assessment, education outreach, guardians on strategy, strategy and planning. And also another thing to think about is communication with the, with the outside public. So maybe like, we were talking about like a webpage or some social media to have the public communicate with us to say, hey, these are some ideas and requests and help build the community. Let's see. So this is a, an illustration that our vice chair, Rush Hamden drew. It's an, that's the cat. It's the eco cat.
Love Rush. Way to go, Rush.
Yeah, it was an eco cat. So, you know, the, the assessment group is going to assess current use of energy, water, I think maybe working with BWP on that, right? Yeah. To see where we can, you know, save costs or create renewable sources. Collaborate with city departments. We're having Karen Pan from the city department to talk to us in a few weeks about the greenhouse gas plan to see how we can collaborate, working on, on creating policy, just standard across the board so that each school site doesn't have to go to Larry or Carrie and say, hey, can we do this? So it makes more, more things efficient and clear, comply with existing federal and state laws, recycling organics, because at the middle school level, it's not quite, not quite complying with recycling yet. And that's been a law since 10 years ago. We talked about website, creating a working charter, a vision and, yeah, increasing environmental literacy with the school system. So those are just things upcoming. And in the short term, we're thinking about trees on campus. Say, like, 233 trees by 2023 is a short term. Already talking to Tree People and they seem like a great collaborator. Longer term is creating pilot programs of gardens on site, community gardens on school sites and water capture pilot projects with the city. So I'll leave you with this. This is a Greta and, you know, she started the whole student movement, which the adults have been inspired by. So we welcome any input, comments or, you know, volunteer. So thank you.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Thank you very much for the great presentation and I know that my colleague, Dr. Weisberg and I, we've been working on this. I just wanted to also thank my board members and the district for supporting this. And I think, you know, when we're thinking in holistic things, you know, we just had a conversation with the city council and council member Schultz about creating a center for entrepreneurship and innovation. And I think this could also be linked to it where we can also generate the next generation of entrepreneurs who are thinking in the green environment. And it doesn't hurt also that our assembly member, Laura Friedman, is the Chair of Transportation, which I think at one point we should have conversations about, I mean, she is one of the biggest champions when it comes to environment. And on a side note, I think it'll be great to get a T-shirt for my colleague because she owns, how many cats?
Three, it's fine.
She has three cats.
I know I seem like I have a lot more than three cats, but I actually only have three.
So let's get that T-shirt.
You want to have an eco cat T-shirt.
I love it. Eco cat T-shirt. But thank you for doing this. And we just did a ribbon cutting for the cultural, not we, the chamber, and I was there, you were there, Dr. Weisberg, for the cultural marketplace. And I've already talked to the people who run it. I told them you should give one boot to our students. And what I love to see is, once these gardens go up and running, for our students to go and sell their produce or whatever it is they're doing, or products that are made out of recycled. I mean, I was at the Trashathon show, I mean, that was fantastic, you know? And for, for them also not only to, you know, you know, help us, but also learn about entrepreneurship, starting their own business. And they've already agreed to give a little boot to our students, whether it's one week arts or if it's, you know, fruits, vegetables, whatever it is. And I love to also get this also with the farmer's market. So, but the challenge has always been, how do we maintain these gardens?
Yeah.
You know, and staff. And I think that's always been the challenge. But I know this is a wonderful group. I've been to several of the meetings and I think we're in the right path. So thank you for all you do and, and thank you for the whole committee, for their commitment. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you for your time this evening. 10D, report on independent study for the 2022-2023 school year. Dr. Paramo.
Good evening, President Tabbett and distinguished board members. Tonight, my colleague, Dr. Knopik and I are here to report on our independent study program for 2022-2023 and be able to answer any questions you might have. If we can get the PowerPoint? I'd like to talk just basically by giving an overview of general information regarding the independent study program. All independent study will be provided through the Independent Learning Academy. What's new for 2022-2023 school year is that the ILA is also going to be incorporating the elementary program and a new traditional model at the secondary or for the secondary. The independent study program will follow the regular school calendar and it's going to require the same number of instructional minutes. In order to facilitate and provide for the independent study program, because it has grown, we are going to be enhancing our staffing for the ILA to include an administrator that specifically oversees ILA and nothing but ILA, an office manager and also a counselor for the ILA. And I will invite Dr. Knopik to speak about the elementary program.
So with the elementary ILA, we're going to be having daily live instruction in English Language Arts and in mathematics for our TK through fifth grade students. Beyond the English Language Arts and Mathematics, students will also participate in their subject areas such as science and social studies and physical education and music as examples. And they will do that, both subjects asynchronously, which means that they are doing it independently on their own. There'll be assigned assignments. Teachers will guide them and the teachers will be there to help as resources, those kind of things. But a lot of it is more independent study for those subject areas. But a lot of it is more independent study for those subject areas. But once again, more direct instruction on the ELA and math side, less on the music art PE, and a little bit on the social sciences, so it could be integrated to the ELA and math. The instructional minutes, we follow the same as with the regular school day for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten. It's 180 minutes per day. Grades 1, 2, 3, 230 minutes a day, and grades 4 and 5, 240 minutes a day. We are offering the regular core program, and dual immersion will not be provided in that environment. The elementary program will follow all the approved instructional materials, all the state-approved materials, as well as the board-approved materials. And then we will have a new supplemental online content to supplement the core instructional program. Students will have the ability, through their families, to go ahead and return to in-person learning within five days if they so choose to. And then, students and families need to be aware, though, that there's no guarantee that they will return to their home school. There may not be space available to go back to that 5th grade classroom at school X. So we'll do the best we can, but there's no guarantee on that. And of course, we'll be providing district Chromebooks as we currently do right now. Students will be expected to be on, to attend live sessions live daily, and will be taking attendance. Students will also need to complete their asynchronous assignments every day, and they'll turn them in, and they'll get graded by their teachers. And I didn't say this, but we have four teachers hired to go ahead and work the ILA for independent study for elementary. So they have to complete all their work assignments and attend sessions to get to be graded and remain in the program. Students that have poor attendance will go ahead and have supports to go ahead and get them re-engaged, and there'll be some fail-safe structures to go ahead and to help them to get realigned and get back on track. But if for any reason it doesn't happen that way, there is going to be a conversation with the families to go ahead and recommend possible return to the in-person instruction. And this is a sample grade two schedule. It's very similar to the other grade levels, grade two going from 8:30 to 2:25, just like in regular ed and the in-person instruction. There'll be a time period for language arts, a time period for mathematics, the asynchronous work. There'll be time for ELD, physical education, et cetera, as you see all here outlined. Okay?
For the secondary, the ILA will offer both course-based and traditional model of independent study. So course-based, we're already familiar with. Students will complete one or two courses every 22 days. This program is best for students who are looking to focus on one class at a time, or for students who want to accelerate quicker. The new traditional model, the students will maintain six classes, but have the entire semester to complete the courses. This is best for students who are enrolling in the ILA midsemester, or who would like the option to return to in-person learning later in the year. Students will be expected to attend online classes, engage with content, and to complete work daily. As it pertains to dual enrollment, course-based students may take up to two classes in person at their school of residence in addition to the classes taken at the ILA. The traditional model, students may take two classes instead of two of their ILA courses for a total of six classes. A student may not take four classes at the high school and two classes at the ILA. This is because the number of students assigned to an ILA teacher is restricted, and because they are also the case managers, they can only manage full-time students. Next steps. Enrollment information will be available on the website. The school will contact families that have already indicated they are planning to enroll their students in independent study for 2022-2023. There will be a handbook for parents that will also be available on the website. And family orientation for parents and students will begin the week of August 1st. And I am happy to answer any questions for the secondary, and Peter can answer for elementary. Yes?
Hey. Thank you to you both. Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
The first of which I think either of you can answer, which is, we know that ILA was really struggling with staff this year, and we created these positions, which is fantastic. But how much extra workload do these new programs put on? So three people is amazing, and I know we also hired more teachers, but can you speak to sort of bandwidth and how much extra work this is going to be? I mean, we don't know yet, but could you talk a little bit about that?
So in terms of the new assignments, I think this is a huge enhancement to what we've had previously. So I feel like in terms of the volume, we're going to be better equipped to deal with that, just in the administrator alone.
Great.
The sole focus is the ILA.
Yeah.
And they're not having to split their time between the adult school and the ILA.
Great.
And also having a full-time counselor. Part of the concern for teachers at the ILA is that they were doing counseling work.
Yeah.
And this is going to help with that. So instead of the teachers scheduling kids into classes and reviewing their transcripts to figure out which class to put them in, we now have a counselor with a PPS credential that is going to be doing that work. So I think that we're going to be in good shape with that.
That's great.
Based on survey data, at the beginning of the summer, we have already hired 10 teachers for the secondary. Now, that could change drastically in the next few weeks, but we are prepared for that, and we will hire teachers accordingly. We try very hard to keep the caseload at 25. That's our goal. We can go up as high as 30, because contractually that's what our numbers are, but as close to, as we can get to 25 is the goal.
Right.
So we will just monitor the enrollment like we always have, and we'll be proactive in trying to get those things staffed, particularly if the enrollment increases a lot between now and the time school starts.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, Dr. Cameron?
Let me just address elementary. So this past year, our teachers that worked elementary independent study, they worked eight to three in their regular positions, the curriculum specialists too. And then, at 3 o'clock, the seven, eight teachers would come online and go ahead and do their lessons daily. And then we had people also that were curriculum writers. So we had a bunch of people doing work.
Yeah.
Beyond the regular school day.
Yeah.
Now with these four teachers, they're going to be able to go ahead and have time during the school day to deliver the lessons, and then also to develop the lessons and grade the assignments and those kind of things. So it's much better, much easier.
I think it's just great for people to hear how thought-out this process is, because it has been, so it's nice to hear, again, how thoughtfully developed this was. The only other two questions I have that I think are probably quicker is, one, if you could talk a little bit about the SPED supports that are going to be offered? And then the last one is, I know you've already identified families over the summer who want to do this, but for the August 1st, especially because, you know, with COVID creeping closer towards us.
Sure.
How are we going to get the word out to families in general about that August 1st orientation, or even before?
So the outreach to families has already started.
Right.
But it will be in full force starting next week.
Awesome.
So I think that'll be, we're already trying to schedule the meetings for the returning students to ILA, starting that first week in August. The bigger concern are the new kids to ILA, because those meetings take longer.
Right.
Because they've never been to the ILA. And so our new administrator, Laura, is already working on that. In all honesty, I've met with her every single day since I've been back this week. So we are, we're ready to go with that, and I think that'll be good. As far as SPED is concerned, the apex coursework is rigorous. It's rigorous for our regular ed kids, our general ed kids, right?
Yeah.
So for our SPED kids, we do have a platform that we've been using for several years that we've had tremendous success with. And so our plan is, it's called Cyber High. It's the name of the platform. And so our SPED kid, it's more accessible for our SPED kids.
Okay.
And so that is a platform that is specific for them that we can utilize, in addition to any of our EL kids that wanted to do independent study. So that would be the platform, that's our go-to platform for those stakeholder groups.
Excellent. Thank you both.
Sure.
And you may have said this, and it just washed over, but how many kids will you be able to put into the program in both?
So we have 10 teachers for the secondary. So with a caseload of 25, you're talking about 250 to 300 kids. That's what we're staffed for at the moment.
Okay. That's great. That's a big jump up from where we were previously at 100 kids or something.
Correct.
And then the same kind of numbers would be for elementary, 20 to 25 kids per classroom, per teacher, and those kind of things, so.
Great.
Yep.
And are we seeing, I'm sorry, Steve, are we seeing new enrollees to the district that want to participate in this kind of program that maybe their homeschools don't have? And is that an option for a permit?
It's an option for a permit. There are probably those kids that have just enrolled that are interested. I don't have direct knowledge of that. In any case, they still have to enroll at their homeschool first, and then we have to do a transition meeting to get them into the ILA. So they're really not hindered in any way, they just need to go through the process.
I'm excited to see the new option, you know, for the secondary of the traditional model, but I'm kind of curious to know how that will work in relation to how the, you know, how the course model works, where it's, the student is kind of able to go at their own pace, but there is a check-in, and the teacher can track their progress during the week before they have their weekly check-in. Are the students in the traditional model going to be expected to be in all those courses sometime every day? Are they still kind of allowed to move at their pace as long as they are meeting, you know, weekly benchmarks?
Yeah.
Are we checking to see, are they doing some coursework in each one every day?
Right. Honestly, that's an excellent question. So I want to first say that this is solving a lot of problems. We were having, it's very difficult when a student chooses, after being at Burbank High for five weeks, to all of a sudden go to the ILA. We can't, we can't line up that coursework. And so this solves that problem. It also solves the problem of a student who decides they want to go back to their homeschool. And so doing the traditional model allows them to make that transition easily and seamlessly without any loss of credit. So I want to make sure I emphasize that first. But yes, it's the same expectation. They still have to check in with their case manager. They still have to make adequate progress, which is monitored. They are doing specific classes each day of the week to make sure that all six of the classes are addressed. Thank you.
It is. Okay. Finally, 10 F, report on facilities and technology projects. Mrs. Katka?
Good evening again. There are six items on tonight's agenda in the consent agenda that deal with expenditures for bonds. So if we can go ahead and get the PowerPoint. So the first item is an approval of an additive change order. These all have to do with Disney. Disney is wrapping up, and I can give a brief update maybe at the end of this. Item 13AY is for the project for the SWPPP inspections for the two-story modular building regarding the stormwater. The vendor is SoCal Stormwater Runoff Solutions Services, Inc. The amount is not to exceed $24,002.11. This additive change order is in the amount of $9,168.50, and it's due to the delay that Silver Creek caused with the delivery of the buildings. The next item, we have four ratifications that are coming up, and just apologies upfront, but because of the kind of the rush to get the building done by August 1st. So the first ratification is item 13AZ. It was to furnish and install the tile flooring in the elevator by Reliable Floor Covering, Inc., and that amount is not to exceed $1,0459. Can't quite see that. Item 13BA is again for Disney for the building. It was to move the furniture and equipment from the old building to the new, and we used Burbank Movers Moving Company, and that amount was not to exceed $6,780. The next is item 13BB. That was for the comprehensive utility investigation of the playground area, and that was by C-Below, vendor that we've used before on this project. This amount was not to exceed $3,600. The last ratification is item 13BC. This project was to furnish heating, ventilation, and air conditioning for the bar unit for bungalows. This was done by Gary Pacific Supply, and this amount was not to exceed $10,570.11. The last item is item 13BG, and this was to install the tackable fabric wrap panels and whiteboards in all classrooms. This work started today, actually. Contractor is Techwall, and this is not to exceed $39,780. And this was strongly requested by the teachers, and I think we did, our facilities director, Larry Cross, did a good job in getting these tackable surfaces up, including a whiteboard that is in there. So just to give you an update, in general, the Disney project, yesterday the cement was poured in all areas, including the lunch shelter, which is a bigger area, and it extended it so that we can bring in some tables with umbrellas to extend the lunch shelter area, the shaded area. The blacktop was delayed a little bit. It's going to go in early next week. The sod should go in a little bit later than that, and they're working on the irrigation at the same time. So we are, Mr. Cross is confident that the building will be done on August 1st, and we will have a team of custodians that are coming in to kind of clean up. It's a dusty process, so they're going to do a complete washdown of all the walls, exterior walls, and make sure that the rooms inside are clean, and we're really shooting to get ready to go by August 1st. So any questions?
No, but I do want to agree with you about Mr. Cross. Larry's been doing an exceptional job. I went by the beginning of one week, and there was that mound of dirt, and I knew that a mound of dirt could be gone in a day or so, but somebody else may not. And by the end of the week, not only was the mound gone, but it was graded, and everything's ready to go. So exceptional job. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of moving parts, and he's making it happen. So it's greatly appreciated.
Yeah. I happened to be there the day that they were, and I think in the 15 minutes that I stood there, there were probably three truckloads of the dirt leaving, and it was very dusty, because by the time I got out, I was covered in dust, which is why we need to wash down all the exterior walls. But it's amazing how fast they did that, and at the same time that they were removing the dirt, they were putting in the gravel to provide the base for the asphalt. So they really have, it's a working machine there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, right. Okay. Moving to the public hearing, which was, it's approximately 7:30.
Somewhere.
Right? Somewhere. So I'm going to hit the gavel. Dr. Weisberg?
Thank you.
The public hearing for item 11A is now open. Would anyone like to provide a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we can gavel out. I didn't warn you?
School has not come.
Okay, great. And just make sure. So 11A is the...
12, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have to read all that? Okay. 12A, Appeal of the Agreement, Approval of the Agreement Between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, CSEA, in accordance with AB1200, Chapter 1213, Statutes 1991, AB2756, Chapter 52, Statutes 2004, GC3547.5.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I will move the Board of Education to approve the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees Association in accordance with AB1200, Chapter 1213, Status 1994, AB2756, Chapter 52, Statutes 2004, GC3547.5, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to give Dr. Nieman a shout-out for the amazing amount of work. I was meeting with Laura Baumann today, who's the president of CSEA, and one of the really positive things she said is that she can't remember a time, like her recent memory, where district staff, and specifically you, that she felt like the interests of the unions were so prioritized, singled everybody here out. But, I mean, that's, that's a huge deal.
You bet.
So I just want to say kudos to you, and that came from her totally unsolicited. But, so thank you for this. Yeah.
I recuse myself from the compliment.
Great.
Okay.
Can I just explain a little bit about this? Because this is, might be a little confusing to some people. When we implemented the job study... When we implemented the job study salary schedules, we had to create five different salary schedules to cover 2020 and on with job study, minimum wage, 1%, minimum wage, and all that jazz. So once we did that, we discovered that we had a pretty serious compaction issue at our lowest levels, so much that like a secretary one and a secretary two were now making the same range. Or when we moved some minimum wage people, now they were making, with, with implementation of jobs, job study, they were going to be making less, and we, we've always said no harm. Like, we never want to cause harm to employees, right? So we did, we pulled together a very quick negotiation session to address only those ranges that were impacted by minimum wage compaction. So this wasn't us coming together to say, oh, let's find more classifications to give money to, like, here's some extra money. It was really that we needed to look at the, the need of minimum wage and the effects of the 2022 implementation of minimum wage and address those specifically. So it was done in a day. I want to thank both teams. It was really, really great. And kudos to really payroll and HR that are, been working so hard to get this to roll tomorrow. So.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Okay, all in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries 5-0. 12B, approval of the contract for the superintendent of schools. So this item is the board's discussion and approval of the superintendent's contract. The specific terms of the contract include the following. The contract term ends June 30th, 2025. The sal, the annual salary is $260,642. The superintendent will see, receive the same health and welfare benefits as those, as other classified management employees. The superintendent is entitled to a stipend for an earned master's degree, an earned doctorate degree, or for longevity to the same extent as other classified management employees. The superintendent is entitled to paid health benefits upon retirement after five consecutive years of satisfactory services to the same extent as other classified management employees. That concludes the summary of the significant contract items. Is there a motion and a second?
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the employment contract with Matthew R. Hill as superintendent of schools with a salary increase retroactive to July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Dr. Weisberg.
First of all, I want to know what the R stands for at some point. So somebody, I can't remember who, I think it was Mr. Ferguson, but if I'm not quoting someone correctly, is that this is the biggest part of our job. So I've spent a lot of time listening and talking and meeting with people, and I feel very lucky to have had the kind of working relationship with Dr. Hill that we've had so far, where he, he and I meet every week, which has been hugely beneficial. And one of the things I think a lot about as a board member is balancing that personal working relationship and that dynamic, also with the needs and concerns of our stakeholders. And that's a difficult thing to balance. It's hard. And so what feels appropriate for me right now, what I'd like to suggest, is that we postpone the vote and allow the contract to reach its actual conclusion in 2023. And I want to talk a little bit about why I'm suggesting that. And I've brought this up before, so this is not news to anybody, that I, I feel like our evaluation process and the structure of it is flawed. It's not news to anybody on this dais. I find it very difficult to say to someone, your work has not been up to par, when I feel like we've not provided often the opportunity to have forthright conversations about where the issues are, and then provide opportunity to address those issues. That, to me, is hugely important as somebody who is an employee and somebody who is a person. So that is part of the problem for me. I have heard the concerns brought forward by our community members, our stakeholders. I've thought a lot about it. To me, it feels like it makes the most sense to move forward in the coming year. We are talking about what I think is a really constructive and supportive and proactive evaluative process that's much more of a team effort, I think, between the superintendent and us. And that allows us to work together to address some of the issues. It allows our, I think, our community members to feel like their concerns are being heard. And then when the conclusion of the contract is up in 2023, then we can vote on a renewal. To me, it feels like that addresses myriad issues and allows us to continue supporting the superintendent as we move forward with clear communication, clear expectations, and the ability to support him in succeeding in all of those areas. And I can't think of another situation where both of those things can exist, and both of those things feel really important to me. And I, I feel like that's fundamentally our job as board members, to do right by our constituents, to do right by our superintendent, to set people up for success, and to support them throughout the process. So that's what I would like to propose that we do.
Anyone else have any discussion?
I disagree. I don't, I don't think you wait, you, you don't, I mean, traditionally, we have not waited until a contract was expired before we negotiated an extension. And, and I think there's a reason for that because you don't want to, if the superintendent were to leave at the end, if we weren't to renew it, we would then have to find a new superintendent, a not insubstantial process.
Sure.
And we would wind up at June, July 1st next year, you know, with possibly no leadership of the district. And I, without a superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay. I'm, I'm all right. I feel it is appropriate to support. I, I don't feel that would be supporting the superintendent either. I, I, there's an analogy in sports that, you know, if you're a lame duck, you're already out, you know, you have one foot out the door. I, I don't.
But why do you see, could you help me better understand why you see it as a lame duck? That's helpful for me. Because I, I don't see it that way, so it'd be helpful to understand why that would be.
I, I think it shows a lack of confidence in, in the, in the performance. And if that's the case, then, then, you know, that's what, the way you should, you know, approach whether you think the contract should be extended or not. But I think if there is the confidence in his ability and in his leadership, then that's something we can, that we can vote on now. I also think waiting until the end of the next, the end of the contract, you know, the reality is, there, there are two board seats up, and you could wind up having two people who are, are in even less of a situation than you are, you know, who have worked with them for less than, you know, six months deciding on that.
Sure.
Rather than someone, you know, who's, who's had the ability to, you know, work further. I, I think it's a more fair evaluation of the, of the, you know, having the current board consider it rather than because, because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know who's going to be on the board, you know, come July. So I, I don't, I don't feel it would be as fair, it's possibly not as fair an evaluation because we don't know the enough.
Okay, so any other further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. And this vote has to be a vote by each member. Yep. So we, everybody good? I can continue? Okay. Mr. Fritner?
I vote yes.
Dr. Aga Konian?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg?
No.
Mr. Ferguson?
No.
And I vote yes, so motion carries 3-2. Thank you. Moving on. Approval of employ, oh, we already did that, sorry. Acceptance of gifts.
President Tabbett.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education take formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district, and that the board president convey appreciation to the donors, as presented.
It is a long list, so bear with me, but exciting.
Need a vote.
Oh, all those in favor of accepting the gift report as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Blackbough Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used for materials and supplies at Dolores Wortham Middle School. Richard Bertane Jr. wishes to donate to the district $110 to be used for AP Advanced Placement Tests for economically challenged students. Robert and Denise Overham wish to donate to the district $110 to be used for AP Advanced Placement Tests for economically challenged students. The Herman Company wishes to donate to the district $330 to be used for AP Tests for economically challenged students. Evan Gordon wishes to donate to the district $550 to be used for AP Tests for economically challenged students. Peter Lars, Inc., Cornerstone Photography, wishes to donate to the district $523.38 to be used, to be used for materials and supplies at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $4,962.36 to be used for math intervention at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $493.34 to be used for graphic novels at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $478.55 to be used for inclusive and diverse biographies at the Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $474.97 to be used for class novel sets at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Edison Elementary Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $34,000 to be used to purchase a new marquee sign at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation wishes to donate to the district $7,453.90 to be used for SEC Curriculum and Art Class at Luther Burbank Middle School. Furline LLC wishes to donate to the district $1,500 to be used for school expenditures at Luther Burbank Middle School. Galpin Ford Dealership wishes to donate to the district $100 to be used for school expenditures at Luther Burbank Middle School. John Muir PTSA wishes to donate to the district $500 to be used for school improvements and equipment for restocking classroom emergency supplies at John Muir Middle School. Smuggler, Inc. wishes to donate to the district $6,000 to be used as needed at John Muir Middle School. Thank you very much for all the donations. It is greatly appreciated. Moving on to consent agenda. Do any of the board members, well, first of all, I need a, I need a mo, yes, sir.
Wait.
Wait, what happened?
I'm sorry. We have one amendment that's at your desk, so I just want to make sure the motions, the amended 13S.
Right. I move the consent agenda items 13A through 13E and 13G through 13BH be approved.
Second.
Thank you for the motion. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. So we'll do this one separately? This is what, agenda item consent.
13F. I think you can just say as amended. I don't know if you need to pull it out, but.
Okay, so consent, can, will you do that, please?
Consent agenda items 13A through E and 13G through, where's the last one? BH as presented and 13F as amended.
Thank you. Are you okay with the second? Who, was it? Dr. Weisberg?
Oh, sure, second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Consent agenda is approved on a five-oh vote. Let's see, tonight, we have a few retirements. Retiring is Sean Malloy, McKinley Elementary School. We also have Valerie Cafarella, Marion Lusby, David Almos, and Francisco Villarreal. Thank you, all of you, for your years of service to the district. It's greatly appreciated, and you will be missed. Thank you. Does any, we don't have anyone here to address the board, and so.
No, yeah, no virtual speakers either.
No virtual speakers either. Okay, so we will address, I mean, adjourn tonight's meeting in
Memory of
Yep. I just, sorry, couldn't remember her last name. I'm so sorry.
Ramirez.
Ramirez. We are journeying tonight in memory of Leila Ramirez.